Welcome to the March 25th, 2025 regular session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. The meeting is now called to order. First up, we're going to have the invitation. Mr. Scott Meyer, the FCA. Everybody stand, please.
Let us pray. God, we are thankful to be in this room tonight. And God, I pray for five things this evening over our city and our elected officials. God, I first pray that we honor them. From the Old Testament to the New Testament, Lord, you've called us to give honor and respect to those that you have appointed to leadership. God, I also want to pray for a spirit of thanksgiving, that we are thankful to those who have been put in position by you to serve our community, to work diligently to make decisions, and that we have a spirit of thankfulness for the time and commitment for serving our community here in Hagerstown. God, I also pray for humility over our elected officials and also those who are here tonight, that we all operate in a spirit of humility. We need humble leaders. God, I also pray for protection, protection over them personally, their families. I pray for all of our city employees, that you will protect and guide them as they work diligently to serve the great city of Hagerstown. And God, finally, I pray tonight for wisdom. I pray for wisdom in all the decisions that they have to make. Lord, I pray that you give them the ability to discern truth. I pray that you give them the ability to make decisions that honor and please you in every way. God, we are so thankful for another night to be here, to be in your presence, and to, Lord, to serve faithfully, because you have established every ruler and every principality from the Old Testament up till today and will continue in the future. We thank you for that commandment you've given us, and we pray that we can honor and continue that, because it's all for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
For me, standing for pledge of belief. I pledge a belief. Okay, first up, we have our announcements. We have a rule to proceed here, it's effective of December 17th, 2024. Use the cell phones during meetings, it's restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion into the official record. Our meeting schedule moving forward is Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, is a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, is a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, is a work session at 4:00 PM. And Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, regular session at 7:00 PM. There's no meeting scheduled on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025. I have a couple of appointments tonight for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Scott Bowen and David Holler. Do I get a motion to approve? So move. Do I get a second? All in favor? May I pose? Okay. Here he is. Did I have, it's just got here? Or both?
I know Mr. Bowen's here, I don't know if Mr. Holler is or not.
All right. Just going to have Scott come up first. Here it is. Right, right hand. I, Scott Bowen. Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown.
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Boarding and Zoning Appeals.
Execute the office of Boarding and Zoning Appeals.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state. Thank you.
Sign beside your name.
Thank you.
In here, too.
Oh, great. Thank you. I knew we weren't getting out of here. Good smiles, one. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have a couple of proclamations. We have one for, I should have paid up, but one for Women's History Month. That's enough there. Who would you like to all come up for that? Who would you like to come up for that? Okay, well, first off, I'd like to have all the city employees come up for Women's History Month, if you don't mind. Janet? You?
Don't be shy. Come on.
Joanna? Anybody else? Donna? And Ashley.
Okay, Women's History Month presents a great opportunity to honor resilience, courage, and achievements of the women who came before us and are shaping history today. The theme for 2025 is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations, recognizing the historical achievements women have made to help advance and improve our lives in tech, fashion, medicine, science, activism. And we honor American women from all generations and backgrounds who have been integral in our prosperity and productivity and who have made an indelible mark on the soul and heartbeat of our nation. And American women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. Therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, William McIntyre, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month. We are especially proud to acknowledge and celebrate the dedicated public service who put the residents of Hagerstown first. We encourage all citizens to celebrate exceptional women in our lives and in our country.
Awesome.
It's a big responsibility to represent all women.
Want to do it?
No.
Okay. There you go. Yeah, that's, she looks like having a horse. Here we go. Here we have good smiles, one, two, three, one more, good smiles, one, two, three. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, also, we have our retiree this week, and that is Ms. Kathy Marr. And we have a certificate of appreciating for you. Kathy began her career with the city of Hagerstown as a senior planner on April 10th, 1995. She was promoted to planning director on December 12th, 2002, as currently the Director of Planning and Code Administration, most notably the first female director of planning for the city of Hagerstown. Prior to becoming, or I'm sorry, prior to coming to the city of Hagerstown, Kathy was a Peace Corps volunteer from 1984 to 1986 in Barbados, and she worked as a planner at the city of Williamsburg, Virginia from 1990 to 1995. Kathy Marr will retire from the city of Hagerstown effective April 11th, 2025. Kathy had many accomplishments during her tenure, the creation of the Land Management Code in 2008, updates on two comprehensive plans in 2008 and 2018, followed by two comprehensive rezones, 62 annexations for residential, commercial, and industrial developments to include North Oak Southern, Thomas Bennett Hunter, 45 and 55 West Oak Bridge Drive, Marriott Hotel, and retail stores along Cole Road and Dow Farm. Residential developments include Hager's Crossing, Greenwich Village, Green, right? Greenwich Park, okay. Hillside Manor, Collegiate Acres, Fairchild Heights, Pangborn Heights, Pangborn Village, East Bridge, Clearhill, and Virginia Commons. Kathy serves as Secretary on the Washington County Hearts Council Board of Directors. In 2012, Kathy won the John Fry Historic Preservation Award for outstanding advocacy and leadership in historic preservation. In 2013, the Maryland Historical Trust presented the Excellence in Community Engagement Award for the project Interpreting Hagerstown Civil War History to the city of Hagerstown. Hagerstown, Washington County Convention and Visitors Bureau and the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. Kathy Marr is an urban planner with several artistic tendencies. Her creative outlets include Beaded Jewelry, Photography, Pen and Ink, Characters, celebrating notable events in both her personal and professional life, and an illustrated children's book is in the works. Therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, William McIntyre, Mayor of the city of Hagerstown, hereby express our sincere appreciation to Kathy Marr for her dedication, commitment, and exceptional public service over the past 30 years. We congratulate you on your retirement and wish you continued success in all your future endeavors.
You really dug deep. I didn't even know this was on the agenda until I sat back there. But thank you very much. It's been great working for the city of Hagerstown all these years, and I look forward to retirement.
Awesome. Good smile. Yeah, right. We're good. Here we go. Okay, good smile. One, two, three. We can smile a little more. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
Let Debbie get one. Oh, so.
All right. Next up, we have Agenda Items, Set and Comments. Set and comments on Agenda Items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to three minutes. Let's see, first up. Okay, we have two people signed up. Mr. Court. The Court. Is that Court Minusman on any team in here? Okay. Sorry about that.
Hello. Do your name and address.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Minusman, 12827 Fountainhead Road, Hagerstown, Maryland. Here to talk about the parking rate structure that's on the agenda item. First, just want to let everybody know, if you don't know, I'm the owner of three businesses downtown Hagerstown, soon to be four, Sentinel Capital Solutions, Viva's on Potomac, Minusman Distillery, and soon to be the Dugout Sports Bar downtown. So I'm intrinsically involved in downtown and what's going on. But I'm here to support the parking rate structure that you guys have for the flying boxcars days, but I would like to make a suggestion to that. First, I think that the hub city deck should be raised to $15. During the work session meeting you had, they talked that the average price is between $10 to $12, and so I don't understand why we'd be giving them a lowering it when those are the days that are the fullest. So those are the things there. I suggest that the A and E be moved to $10 and keep the university deck at $5. I think everybody knows that if we have a flat rate, one of the things, the incentives that it does at flat rate is if I come early, stay late, it's $10, it's $15. I don't have to worry, hey, do I go a little bit longer? Am I going to pay more? If I know that I'm paying $2 and I look at my watch, hey, if I leave now, I can go out of town and save some money and park for free. But if I already paid it, we'll stay downtown. The second thing I want you to think about is those game days are approximately 20% of the parking days, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, approximately 20%. So it's not going to move the needle in revenue. It's going to make it quicker. Hopefully, we can get a little bit more money out of the hub deck, and with the $5 rate, hopefully more people will park down there. The locals understand where to park. The people from out of town, they're going to go closest, and we want them to stay downtown just a little bit longer. But what we're worried about downtown, and what we'd love to sit and discuss with you during the work session, some of the downtown businesses, is the other 80%. That's what we need to look at, because those are the dates. I can't live off of 20% of the year. I think everybody understands that. It's the other 80%, and that's what we'd like to sit down and talk to about a flat rate for the weekends, for the evenings, so that when people come downtown, they stay downtown for a little bit longer. Would love to have that discussion, but I definitely support the flat rates for the flying boxcar days, so, thank you.
Thanks, Court. Okay, next up, we have Paul Fry. Got your address to, please, Paul?
Good evening, Paul Fry, 21942 Lightning Bridge, Smithburg Road in Smithburg. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the business community, again, talking about the parking. I know you're working on some plans, and we certainly appreciate what you're going to look at tonight to adjust a flat rate for game nights for the two decks, and I would encourage you, as Court did, to maybe look at a flat rate for the A and E deck as well for those nights. The other thing I'd like to do is encourage you to host us for a work session. Let's get some more data points for parking. I've seen over the last four to six weeks, there's been a number of community groups meeting with the mayor council at the table. We'd love to meet with you and talk about parking, a scheduled time to be determined. I know we're working with City Minister Scott, I just wanted his team, and so we'll meet with them first, and if you'd like to come meet with the mayor council at a work session. Parking. Lastly, I know you're going to hear about housing development. Just a general comment, we do need more housing. This may or may not be the right opportunity, but I encourage the city to continue working with the county, our partners in the county, to look at more housing here in Washington County. And the city of Hagerstown, as Andy Bampa Sue said, Washington County instead of Hagerstown, your next stop going west. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, that's it on the, anybody else that's not signed up on the agenda, who wants to say anything? Thanks. All right, next up, we have public hearings. Set and comments on public hearings are welcome during public hearings and shall be limited to three minutes. First, we're going to have Joanna Wu come up and explain on commercial uses and outdoor recreation in the professional office mix.
Joanna, you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the response that's given and stated as made will be the full truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Joanna Wu, 18 Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm here to present for the proposed text amendment, ZT 202404, for commercial uses in outdoor recreation in the POM, or Professional Office Mixed Zoning District. The proposal is requested by a property owner as they're having some difficulty finding prospects for raw land in the POM zoning district. They're also looking specifically to construct pickleball courts, but this proposal is to allow for more flexibility for permitted uses by removing the performance standards for certain commercial uses in this zoning district. This is reflected by removing the performance standards detailed in Section F of the zoning ordinance and depicted in the use chart in Section Z. The caps proposed on restaurants and retail match the CL or Commercial Local Zoning District requirements to ensure high intensity uses do not take place in the POM zoning district. The proposal also differentiates between fitness recreational sports centers with and without outdoor fields and courts. Those with outdoor courts and fields would require a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals with POM and IMU zoning. And the Planning Commission had a And the Planning Commission had held a public review meeting on January twenty-ninth for this text amendment and recommended approval for this meeting, for this proposal. And the next steps would be for an open ten-day period for public comment and a follow-up discussion that is scheduled for the eighth. And at this time, I'd like to enter into the record the Certificate of Advertisement for Case ZT 2024-04 to ads replace to advertise for this hearing. That's why. Thank you.
Good, thanks, though. Do you want all three of them to speak first, or do you want...
No, do them separately, if you will. You mean the...
Yeah, do you want everyone on the public hearing?
Go ahead and finish this one and then move on to the next one. Just there.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody signed up for that one, but...
Nobody signed up for that?
No one did sign up for this one, but there might be somebody that...
Okay, does anybody that has not signed up would like to talk on that hearing? All right. Next up, we have Kathy Marr with the Kansas-related Land Management care text amendments.
Good evening.
So...
No, that's right.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Marr, short timer for the City of Hagerstown, one, east Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. We're here tonight for a public hearing on a variety of text amendments proposed in Land Management Code related to cannabis. It's a strange thing for me to be going out on, but that's what we have. Amendments related to cannabis. The Planning Commission forwarded amendments related to cannabis as part of the 2024 package of text amendments and as a separate amendment related to PUDRs in 2025. All of the proposed amendments related to cannabis were pulled out to come to the mayor council in one specific package related to cannabis, ZT 2024-03. Public hearing, of course, is scheduled for tonight. State law related to cannabis. While still not legal on the federal level, the state has legalized cannabis for medical as well as recreational use. Several specific cannabis-related enterprises were spelled out in the state code for licensing by the state, direction to local governments that were provided, and how we are to treat these enterprises via zoning. Again, more on state law. Local government is not to unreasonably restrict the location of cannabis growers and processors and cannabis dispensaries. Local government may place separation requirements between cannabis dispensaries and from other specific protected community uses, and local government may prohibit cannabis cafes, and we do in our code. Last year, state law was revised. Local governments restricted that they are prohibited from having more restrictive provisions for cannabis dispensaries, which is basically a cannabis retail store, than we do for alcohol retail stores. New provisions were also added for microenterprises and incubators. The existing zoning provisions related to cannabis enterprise for indoor plant cultivation and processing facilities are permitted in the IMU, IR, and IG, also permitted in the CCMU and POM if twenty-five thousand square feet or less in closed-growth floor area. Cannabis dispensaries, the stores, are permitted in the CG, CR, PUDR, and PUDV if located at least five hundred feet from any existing tobacco stores, vapor, or hookah lounges, or other cannabis dispensaries. And then cannabis cafes, which is the onsite consumption facilities, they are not permitted in the city. Existing zoning provisions related to alcohol retail stores. Right now, alcohol retail stores in our code are just lumped under retail, and retail is allowed in any of our commercial or mixed-use zones. And on the slide, you can see, based on the size of the storefront, where they're allowed in the city, and they're allowed in three, six, nine, ten, eleven zones. So in terms of what do we have in the city already for cannabis enterprises and alcohol and tobacco, CBD sales stores? For indoor plant cultivators and processors, there are three such enterprises in the city, all three on land-zoned IR and IG. We have two cannabis dispensaries, and they are on land-zone CR, which is commercial regional. Alcohol beverage stores, we have eighteen stores in the city. Fifteen are on CG and CR zone land. Two are on CCMU zone land, which is downtown. And one is a non-conforming use in a residential zone. Tobacco sales stores, there are seven in the city on CG and CR zone land. We have two hemp CBD stores on CG zone land. And at the present, there is one vape hookah lounge, and that's also on CG-zoned land. Proposed text amendments are to define cannabis incubator, the new use created by the state last year, which is a state-licensed facility to house micro growers, microprocessors, and microdispensaries. A microdispensary is delivery-only, so it's basically a small warehouse with no storefront. Also proposing to define CBD and hemp stores. They're currently not identified in the code. These enterprises would be those whose primary activity is the sale of CBD, hemp, et cetera. Also proposing to revise the indoor plant cultivation and processing to delete it from the CCMU and the POM due to the odor associated with this use, which if you've been around them, you know there is an odor, which may not be appropriate in a downtown setting where you have rooms very close together as well as housing mixed in, or in an office park. Also proposed, at the request of a business prospect, allow indoor plant cultivation processing of any size in a PUDR with the special design parameters of PUDR that would allow for separation of buffering that might be deemed appropriate. Add cannabis incubators. Allow it where indoor plant cultivating and processing is allowed, which is the IMU, IR, and IG, but not in the PUDR. If over twenty-five thousand square feet in gross floor area in the IMU, we would need a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Add hemp, CBD hemp stores and alcohol beverage stores to the code specifically. Right now, they're just lumped onto retail. Have them have the same provisions as tobacco stores, vapor, or hookah lounges, and cannabis dispensaries, which is allowed in CG, CR, PUDV, and PUDR with a five-hundred-foot separation from one another. And I did some Googling. The liquor board already uses five-hundred-foot separation when they review alcohol license requests. Separation from protected community uses. The state code created a bunch of activities that you could, if you so desired, create separation from cannabis dispensaries from them, being primary and secondary schools, licensed or registered child daycare providers, playgrounds, recreation centers, libraries, public parks, and religious sanctuaries. And so, since we have all of these uses together, what this would have would be tobacco stores, vapor, hookah lounges, cannabis dispensaries, CBD hemp stores, and alcohol beverage stores, all would need to be five-hundred feet away from these protected community uses. State law on the separation requirement. They have put specific parameters in the code because they didn't want any local governments because they want us to be accommodating in a reasonable manner. They didn't want any local codes to say you need to be five miles away from each other because then basically you're outside town. And so they said the most you could say is two thousand six hundred and forty feet is how much distance there needs to be between the uses. We, again, are using five-hundred feet because that's already what's in our code and it's what the liquor board uses. Distance from protected uses. The state law says you can't require more than five-hundred feet. We're proposing five-hundred feet. Consistency requirements. Since local governments are not to treat cannabis dispensaries differently than alcohol retail stores, the same separation distance already in the code are proposed for uses in this category, five-hundred feet from each other and five-hundred feet from the protected uses. And again, the categories, tobacco stores, vapor, hookah lounges, cannabis dispensaries, CBD hemp stores, and alcoholic beverage stores. The impact of changes to existing enterprises. As is typical for zoning, when an amendment are enacted, any existing enterprises which may no longer meet design requirements are grandfathered or considered non-conforming uses unless the code specifically says otherwise. In this case, they would be grandfathered. In Hagerstown, provided non-conforming uses do not sit entirely vacant for two or more years, the non-conforming status remains legal indefinitely. I'd like, before I forget, I'd like to enter into the record the Planning Commission filed by reference and the Certificate of Advertisement for this hearing. So tonight is the, in terms of next steps, tonight's the hearing, and you'll be, have the opportunity to hear from anyone who is in the room about this topic. And then we're scheduled for a follow-up discussion on April eighth.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody signed up for that?
No, I signed up for this one either.
Okay. Anybody who wants to speak on that while we move to the next? Okay. Absolutely, you can. So, just briefly, as I say repeatedly, when we consider ordinances associated with the adoption of or change in legislation associated with cannabis and the legalities thereof, as except before, I fully support the legalization of marijuana. I have no issue with its legalization in any form. However, here's the reality. As you heard Mr. Bowen this evening, take the oath that we all take at this table. The first sentence of that says we're to uphold the U.S. Constitution. That's what it says. Very first sentence of the oath we're supposed to take. Each of us take it, that's what it says. So we're supposed to uphold the laws of the U.S. Constitution, the federal laws. As you heard here this evening from staff, this is not legal in the federal government's eyes and therefore is in violation of those federal laws. That's just as plain as it is. So it is difficult for me to sit here and say that I uphold and the oath that I take for this seat and then turn around and pass legislation that is in violation of that oath because it's in violation of those laws. It is even more of a conundrum when you hear the terms that the state government says that you, as the local government, are not allowed to unreasonably restrict something that is illegal. I just can't seem to marry those two in a manner that would indicate a comfortability in passing such legislation at the local level when one governmental entity that does not have the authority says that we have to do it and the larger governmental authority says we cannot do it. Thanks, Kristen. Okay. Next up, we have Steve Bachmiller on the proposed PUDR overlay map amendment, Dow Farm, Landis Road.
Okay. So, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Bachmiller, Hagerstown City Zoning Administrator, one, east Franklin Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. I appear before you in black in mourning for the imminent departure of my boss for the last twenty-two years. He was the best boss I ever had, by the way. What we have before us tonight is a public hearing for the Dow Farm PUDR zoning overlay. This is a rather interesting and complex situation because this is the first one of these that we've received since rewriting the PUDR provision. So I want to give you a little bit of background before we get into the meat of the particular application. This hearing, what we're doing here tonight, this hearing, will create the record from which the mayor and city council will determine whether to approve, approve with modifications or conditions, or reject this application. Mayor and city council's decision will need to be in a form of a findings, a fact, and conclusions as the ordinance requires a decision on this matter to be made based on certain criteria and circumstances that's set forth in the ordinance. Regarding the history of PUDRs in the city, I'll be brief on this. There are a limited number of PUDRs in the city, including Hagerstown Crossing and East Ridge, and there's also one up in the very northwestern corner of the city as well. There's only a few of them. These were established in the early two thousands under standards that are no longer available to propose new developments. In the recent past, the city amended its PUDR provisions to prioritize mixed-type developments and adjusted requirements to make use of these provisions more appealing to developers. One of the things that we were finding is that, given that it's subject to a process with the elected body and that it is a discretionary act, developers were reluctant to do a lot of the heavy research, the studies, et cetera, not knowing whether or not they were going to get the zoning approvals. So the process was revised, basically make the PUDR process a zoning action, and then if it was to be approved by the mayor and council, then the development as approved per the case in the zoning exhibit would then move through the normal subdivision site plan process that all other developments would. There are two types of PUDRs. One is a PUDV for village, and one is PUDR regional. And basically, the difference between these are the minimum size of the property required to create one, access to roads and corridors. The PUDR village is mostly allowed to be overlaid on residential zoning districts whereas PUDR is mostly overlaid on commercial districts. This one that's before you tonight is a proposal for a PUDR. A PUDR in the city zoning ordinance is a tool that allows the developer to propose creative bulk requirements. And I use the term use schedules. I should have changed that. But basically, uses within those permitted by the ordinance subject to the approval of the mayor and council. In the zoning ordinance, there's a list of uses that are permitted in the PUDRs. In this particular application, we need to make it clear that the applicant seeks the ability to be able to have all of the uses that are in that, that are permitted in the PUDR within the ordinance to be allowed. They don't want any of the uses that are in the use chart precluded. This is not zoning by site plan where a developer proposes a very detailed plan of development. We don't have that in the city at this time with the exception of conversion overlays. The mayor and council approves the general plan, and then the developer then proceeds through the normal subdivision and site plan process developing in accordance with the zoning standards set forth in the approved PUDR application and in accordance with the approved generalized zoning exhibit. And we'll be putting the zoning exhibit up a little bit later. And actually, Gordon, if you want, you can put yours up on the easel. Development standards. If you were to approve this, if the PUDR is approved, the developer will be required to comply with all the same documentation and development procedures and standards of any other development, including but not limited to stormwater management, forest conservation, traffic studies, and road improvements. Since the mayor and city council's decision is discretionary and engineering studies are expensive, the PUDR process does not require such studies at the zoning stage. Such documentation is part of the normal subdivision and site plan process that will follow the zoning phase. In this particular case, however, the developer has shared preliminary traffic studies and obtained feedback from review agencies given the controversy associated with the use of Landis Road as part of this development. So now we're gonna move on to a summary of this particular proposal. The Dow Farm is one hundred and twelve acres of land, more or less. It's predominantly active cropland. There's little to no woodlands that meet the definition of forest. There are some tree outcrops here and there, but nothing that meets our ordinance requirements or our ordinance definitions of forest, at least not the last time it was surveyed. The current zoning of the property is CR, Commercial Regional. Commercial Regional is our most intense commercial zoning district before you start getting into the industrial districts. This is basically regional shopping center zoning. Think the shopping center at Hagerstown Crossing, things like that. There's no maximum permitted on the size of retail stores or anything like that. It's a very intense zoning, commercial zoning district. This property is bordered by Landis Road to the north, I-70 and the US-40 off-ramp to the south. A religious facility and condominium complex are the predominant adjoining properties to the west. And there are a couple of rural properties to the east. No buildings are on the property. Due to anecdotal reports of a farm cemetery, the property is listed on the human burial sites inventory. Deed research and field reconnaissance has produced no evidence of any human burial grounds, and the development will be subject to ordinance requirements regarding how one is to be treated should it be discovered during construction. To give you a little bit of background on that, the city actually is one of the few jurisdictions in the state that has specific regulations in our development standards on how to deal with human burial sites if they happen to be part of a property that is proposed for development. One of our requirements is that we're to maintain a list of all known or speculated properties that may contain human burial sites on them. This property is on that because when the property was annexed This property is on that because when the property was annexed back 15 years ago or so now, a little bit more than that, there was comments made by members of the community that there was a cemetery somewhere on the property. So just by that anecdotal reference, it's on our inventory to keep an eye on. However, the developers have done their research. They find no evidence of it on the property. But so we've mentioned that if for some reason they were to discover something during the development process, we have provisions in our ordinance that require them to stop work and notify various agencies for possible revision of plans. The development proposal, the zoning exhibit will be exhibited at the conclusion of this presentation. However, we do have it over here on the easel. The development proposal consists of a mixture of single-family homes, townhomes, apartment buildings, one commercial industrial site on the east side of the property, and an area of commercial development that they intend to improve with mixed-use buildings that have businesses on the ground floor with apartments on the upper levels. Open space areas, both active and passive, would be provided. A low area formerly shown on the pre-2017 floodplain maps, as formerly floodplain has been no longer floodplain, will be used for forest conservation. And that's a green area to the right center of the site. Access to the site would be via two new street entrances from Landis Road and a new access road from dual highway into the southern portion of the site, which will stub for future connection to the property to the east should it develop. I should also point out that the proposal also includes that the industrial site would also have a direct access on to Landis Road as well. Proposed bulk requirements are shown on a chart on the first page of the zoning exhibit, which are generally consistent with the established city zoning district. Planning Commission Public Review Meeting, the planning commission provides a recommendation to the mayor and council after it conducts a public review meeting. Public review meeting was conducted in December. A large number of persons attended the reading and provided comments and testimony mostly opposed to the development, citing about 15 reasons why the plan should be rejected. After considering testimony provided, the planning commission voted to recommend to this body that the proposed plan be rejected. The planning commission is not opposed to a PUD development on this property. However, the plan as proposed leaves the planning commission with serious concerns as follows. One, the planning commission does not believe the proposed plan is predominantly commercial. Mixed-use development is required by Article 4, Section J1 of the Land Management Code. Two, doubt regarding whether the road connection to be built out to dual highway and the commercial element would materialize after a large portion of the property is developed for the proposed single-family homes and townhomes. And then third, there is no compliance tool available to address the second concern short of a large bond to ensure the dual highway connection will be built. The construction of the road is estimated to cost over $5 million. So their concern is that all this residential gets developed and then the whole thing just stops. And if that happens, you don't have the access point out onto dual highway. And also because the PUD is specifically designed to be a mixed-use development, a mixture of commercial and residential, if the commercial does not materialize, then the whole PUD is in violation of the city's zoning ordinance. This hearing and next steps, tonight's hearing will create the record for which the mayor and council will make its decision on this matter. The files, certificates, and proof of advertising and the exhibit are entered here into the record by reference. After the conclusion of tonight's testimony, the mayor and city council typically will keep the record open for 10 days for additional written submissions. Staff is scheduled to meet with the mayor and city council on April 8 to discuss next steps. Any additional written submissions received will be forwarded to the mayor and city council prior to this workshop. For this development to move forward, the existing annexation agreement regarding this property would need to be amended as the terms and conditions of the annexation mostly reflect the intent at that time to develop the site for a large regional shopping center. If the mayor and city council are inclined to approve this proposal, amending the annexation agreement slash plan would need to occur first. And then anyone who is interested in submitting additional comments, they can submit them to our planning staff at planning@hagerstownmd.org within the next 10 days. And then what I would like to do is briefly walk everyone through the exhibit. It's color-coded actually quite pretty well to highlight certain areas. The blue area is an area of approximately 400 townhouses. Single-family homes would be lining Landis Road, this location here. The purple is the area that is set aside for apartment buildings. This mustard-colored area, this is the commercial area, which their intention is to build a series of mixed-use buildings that would have commercial uses on the first floor with apartments on the upper levels as well. The brown area over here, this is the proposed commercial industrial site. The road access point is here. The applicant controls all of these properties at this time. The road would come in off of dual highway, sneak into the southern portion of the site. And then there would also, in accordance with the requirements of the city's Land Management Code, when the possibility that the property to the east would develop, this road would stub into that. So there's development of that property would also be served by this road as well. One of the requirements of a PUD is what's called a central focal point. I want to back up just briefly and talk a little bit about the PUD overlay in that it was designed to be very flexible, to allow developers to exercise maximum creativity, subject to bulk approval by this body. As a result of that, we got that in this case. Typically, the thought was a focal point would be some sort of Main Street kind of environment. But what the applicant chose to do here is the focal point is the north-south axis down through the center of the site, which would have a village green essentially down through the middle. On either side, it would be lined by townhouses that do not have garage fronts or driveways in the front. They would have their access, their particular access off of the backs on the other side. The townhouses, on the east-west roads, would be garage-style townhouses. But the ones facing into this park would be strictly pedestrian access to the front. And also, if they build some of the buildings closer to the streets along the street, it also helps carry that streetscape focal point down through the center. The green areas are proposed open space. The area that they have does exceed what the ordinance does require for the amount of open space. This area in here, at one time, was identified as floodplain. When FEMA redid the floodplain maps in 2017, they no longer classified this area as floodplain, but it is a low area. So they are looking to use that as open space and also for their meeting their forest apartments. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, then we'll turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation. Thank you.
And before you gentlemen start, I'd like to issue the oath to both of you. Okay. All right, everybody raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And when you do speak, please give us your name and your address.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Paul Plant on behalf of the applicant. I also have with me Jim Dow, who's behind us. He is one of the owners of the parcels in question. Matt Stare seated beside me from DRB, and also Gordon Poffenberger, our civil engineer. We're excited to talk to you tonight about this opportunity. And fundamentally, it is an enormous opportunity. This being what we understand to be the largest undeveloped track left in the city. And this proposal is one that we've been excited to develop with the staff, with Mr. Bachmiller's team. And they've been involved intricately in developing what you see here on the screens. And we're excited about it because it helps the city in a number of ways realize its ideas about village green-based development, walkable developments, developments where you can't, you're not just living, but you're also shopping and you're working potentially, and you can walk to these things in a village concept. And we're excited about it because it would represent a massive expansion of the city's tax base, of course. And so we could talk about this for hours, but instead we want to be very focused and really drill into what we understand, as Mr. Bachmiller has just summarized for you, were the main concerns coming out of the planning commission process. And we want to be very focused. But if you have questions, obviously, we can speak to any of the issues. But really, the two main questions that came out of the planning commission process and the two biggest concerns seem to be whether this is the right mix of residential and non-residential use. The other way this is said is, is this predominantly non-residential? So that's the first question we want to try to really address. The second question is, is there enough assurance that the dual highway connection, the new road, will actually be built? And is that being done at the right time, in the right sequence, with the other events of this development? These are the two questions we really want to focus on here. So let me just start right off, okay? So the first question as to the mix of residential and non-residential uses in this development, the predominance of non-residential uses. There's, of course, no bright line rule in the code about this. It doesn't say it has to be a majority. It doesn't say it has to be a 75%. It says predominant. So this is a judgment call. This is a question of the council's priorities. And of course, one of its main priorities is housing. As Mr. Fry, I think Paul Fry was up here a couple matters ago from the chamber. And as he mentioned, there's such a need for housing right now. And we think that really affects what the right balance is for this site. So we do think it's predominantly non-residential. We've taken a stab at trying to value, and you'll see it, you definitely can't see it with the small print on these screens right now, but at the bottom left of these plans, you can see the attempt that we've made to value the different pieces of the property. And we're estimating that about 53% of the value of this neighborhood is going to be in the non-residential pieces. We think that's predominant. But more importantly, we think that there is one very important rule that the council needs to keep in mind about this, which is that a failing commercial area doesn't help anyone. And so we need to size it appropriately. We need to size it appropriately and have enough residential to support it, especially out on the outskirts of the city. And so we want to design it and proportion it such that it will succeed, right? And so we're doing this in a, as really the first test case coming through this process as a PUDR, where we're trying to achieve, and we think we have achieved, the goals of mixing these housing types and uses. And I want to let Matt Stare from DRB talk a little bit about the uses we're going to be putting into this site and how they'll be next. Matt?
Yep. Good evening, thank you. My name's Matt Stare. I am located at 10303 Arnett Drive, Hagerstown. As we've alluded to, for the residential component, it's really important to have flow into the commercial. You do not want to have a hard stop residential commercial. You really want to promote walkability, urbanistic feel, that central feel of the downtown vibe that then would flow into the commercial component. So I just want to point out, you know, the reason being and the why we went the route we went with the layout of this community. As you notice, the center of the community will have a 2.2 acre usable green space. This usable green space will be fronted with rear-loaded townhomes. So the garages will be to the rear of the unit. This will create an urbanistic feel to the center of the community, really giving it that downtown vibe. Then it's going to transition to the east and to the west, to a traditional townhome. But most importantly, with sidewalks fronting, creating a walkable community that can easily reach to the commercial component and the active open spaces. One thing I want to point out, as you transition from the residential to the purple area, this purple area is going to be, is going to consist of storefront commercial component that will house residential units above. So this is going to create a nice walkable transition to shopping with storefronts, but will also host residential units above. That will create the transition from the urbanistic residential to the storefront commercial component, again in the purple area. Then we're going to transition into the mixed-use commercial. So these are going to be your commercial pads that could host a wealth of different type of commercial uses, whether it's a small shopping and things like that. Then as you see, as we continue off to the east, we have the commercial industrial. The commercial industrial is being really well buffered with a passive green space that will then keep the traditional townhomes buffered from the heavier industrial, commercial use. So that's really our thought process. It allows you to see that the commercial is mixed into the purple area, the orange area, as well as the darker brown. One other thing that I'd like to point out, we lined Landis Road with single-family homes in keeping the same streetscape that currently exists along Landis Road.
Thanks, Matt. So we think we've got the balance right. And so we believe that we've not only satisfied the code section in that regard, but that this neighborhood will epitomize what this PUDR concept was developed for. All right, so I want to move on to the second main question here, having to do with dual access highway. Do you want to? I want to move on to the second issue having to do with the access point to the dual highway, right? And so I think this is probably the component that most interests many of the folks seated behind me who want to speak to this issue concerning traffic. And this, of course, is hugely important. And I just want to get right at the question. What is the assurance that this connection will be built? That's the million-dollar question, right? Well, there are, I want to give you three good reasons why this thing is absolutely going to be built. But it's, in a way, it's actually millions of reasons. And the millions of reasons are that millions of dollars have already been spent by the owners of this ground, where the development will occur, to purchase land that is, you can see it on these drawings here, off to the left side. It's not in the colored area, actually Gordon will point it out to you. Up through there, where you see the access where Gordon is pointing. The owners have not just taken title to the areas that you see in the different colors, but also to the parcels that will be required to connect this neighborhood with the dual highway. And my estimate is roughly $5 million have already been spent to own those properties. And there's nothing else planned for these properties. We're not doing anything else with them. They're owned for the sole reason that we need them in order to make this connection. And that's millions of dollars of momentum that we're not going to walk away from that kind of investment. Second, this, of course, is, you'll recall, this PUDR proposal is also wrapped up with an amendment to the annexation agreement. And I was here a few weeks ago and we talked at the workshop about the annexation agreement. And you recall, in that agreement, the owners are offering to essentially commit legally to dedicate the ground for this roadway by year 10 and to build it before any commercial UNO permits are pulled, right? And why is that an assurance that this will definitely happen? It's an assurance because the value of this development project for the developer is sitting in that commercial ground, in the orange and the purple and the brown. These are the areas where we can't do anything with that ground until we build this road for you in the second phase. And what's the assurance we're going to build the road? The assurance is, we can't pull any of that value out of this investment unless we build that road. It's, there are just too many dollars spent already to walk away from it. And as we proceed with this process, building infrastructure like water and sewer, millions are going to be spent. And so these are the reasons why there is ample assurance that this road is going to get built. So then here's the sub-question to this. Why is this the right sequencing, right? I think some would have us do this sooner. The answer is that if the developer's not permitted to recoup its costs and essentially catch its breath after taking down all this land, building the water and sewer infrastructure, you're at risk of creating the failure that you're worried about, right? So because when do these developments fail midstream? They fail when the developer's over-promised, when the developer is overstretched, right? When he's putting too much money in too soon and doesn't have the income coming in to recover those funds. So what's essential economically here is to phase the neighborhood and to recover some costs, to catch our breath and be able to build that road without essentially bankrupting ourselves such that, you know... ourselves such that, you know, it's a little bit, it's, it's, well, let me, I'm going to turn it over to Gordon Poffenberger, because he can talk a little bit more about the additional traffic work that we've done and the improvements that we plan to make such that this is the right timing for that road to be built. Gordon?
Hi, I'm Gordon Poffenberger with Fox and Associates, 981 Mountain Road, Hagerstown. And I was one. I've personally been involved with this project for 20 years. I was working on it back when it was 1.1 million square feet of retail. I was involved through the annexation. I think we can all admit that the days of the million-square-foot retail stores or shopping centers are over. Everybody shops from their couch now. Things are delivered the next day. As Steve mentioned, we started this process about a year ago with the current plan. We met with Steve and Kathy and Jim Bender several times, talking about the layout, working through Steve's concerns, adding the central green area as we discussed. There were parking discussions based on the city's history with other townhome developments. So we've prepared plans showing how we're going to integrate some common parking areas that we shared with the townhome community. Steve talked about the process we've gone through so far with the planning commission input, public hearing. The traffic study, normally not prepared at this early stage, but we did prepare a traffic study because we knew that was going to be a major concern. The traffic study that we prepared for this layout has a very small fraction of the traffic that was generated by the 1.1 million square feet of retail. The traffic study for this layout has been approved by State Highway on November 26. The only ask they had was to extend the left turn storage on dual highway at Day Road. County approval of the study came on February 5th. Their concern was Landis Road because that is a county road. They asked for the road to be widened to 20 feet. So there are segments of the road that we will be widening and overlaying. And another one that they asked was to straighten out the S curve, just right here. The lab will be straight, as shown, to comply with road standards. Providing a safer means of ingress egress for the proposed community as well as the existing area residents. At previous meeting, at the previous public hearing with the planning commission, we heard concerns about utilities being impacted, water pressure, water flow. That will come later, but with a project of this magnitude, it will be brought into the county's, the city's models for water distribution and sewer collection. And any improvements that are needed to the city's systems would be bore by the developer. I have talked to Nancy with City Water and Sewer, and the new pump station on Head Road, pump station 33, has been sized to accommodate the flows from this project that have been anticipated for 20 years. Another item of concern at the planning commission public hearing was this being a rental community. There are no multifamily units proposed in Phase 1, and all the townhomes and single-family dwellings will be on individual lots as required by the city's Land Management Code. Multifamily will come later in future phases, once the road to 40 is constructed. That's all I have to add.
Thanks, Gordon. So we've tried to address these questions head-on, because we know what you're concerned about, right? Ultimately, the question may come down to, if not this, then what, right? So does this remain farmland in the city? We don't think that makes a lot of sense at the, at the city's gateway. Does this get rezoned into residential only? If it does, then there won't be a connection built with the dual highway, because the residential-only piece doesn't support that economically. You also won't get a village green, sort of central green village design like we put together here. Does this become warehousing? I don't think anybody wants this to become a warehouse, right? And so that's why we think of this as an incredible opportunity for the city. We respect the views of our neighbors, many of whom you'll hear from today, and we've been responsive to their concerns throughout. You've heard several examples of that, such as the single families facing Landis and other steps we've taken to be respectful and responsive to their concerns. But consider, please, as many of them are non-city residents, this is a relatively simple matter for them. It's kind of a straightforward, not-in-my-backyard kind of analysis, right? But as the city officials, as the council, you have to balance the various priorities of the city, the priorities for housing, the priority on investment and tax base. And for all these reasons, we ask you to approve the application, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions? I do, but not at the moment.
We have examples of the architecture, if you want to see them. They're probably included in your packet on page two and three of the bubble plan.
Yeah, we got it in the packet. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, Steve?
Just, Steph, would like to clarify one thing. They were mentioning that the purple area would be the mixed-use buildings. That's not been our understanding. Our understanding was the mustard color would be mixed-use and the purple would be exclusively apartment. Just want to make sure we're clear on what the situation is for the record, so we know what we're talking about.
That was my understanding, but that will have retail on the bottom.
Okay. So this might not be your patent, might mistake you.
That's a newer.
You can see there, there are storefronts along the bottom, your glass fronts, then residential. That's what the plan, or I think that's our little area. That was the transitional component that I was talking about. Oh, I apologize. The storefront here that's on the left side of the board, your right side of the board, as you can see, has the storefront on the first floor, and then the residential use above. And as I was speaking to, that was your transitional component between traditional townhomes, front-loaded townhomes, to the actual commercial pads that would then be located on the, call it the burnt orange location.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the, what they described is not what's reflected in the most recent plan that we have available to us. Not to say that they couldn't amend the application, amend the plan. Our understanding in the drawings that we have been operating off of is that the mixed-use would be in the mustard-color area south of the new road. The purple would be exclusively apartment. If they want to amend their application, that's okay. I just want to make sure that everybody, everybody's clear on the same understanding of that situation. And Steph will just point out one other thing, and that is that one of the requirements of the ordinance is that the commercial area have a coordinated architectural theme. So the area, if the area south of the, the new road becomes individual pad sites for individual businesses, they're not going, it's not going to result in just the individual corporate architecture of any potential lot buyer or tenant that may come along. They're going to be, as part of the requirement of the development of the PUD, to have some sort of coordinated theme of the architecture of whatever the businesses and buildings are in that commercial area. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. These two are going. Okay. I appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have the public hearing comments. We're going to lend them to three minutes per individual. There's something I'd like to read real quick before we have comments, and I should have done it before the agenda item, but I'm going to go ahead and do it now. 7.3 of our mayor and city council rules of procedure. So according to Robert Rules of Order, proper meeting decorum includes speaking only when recognized by the chair, confining debate to the topic at hand, avoiding personal attacks, listening respectfully to other members, and generally maintaining respectful and orderly atmosphere during discussions. Essentially, one person should speak at a time, and members should focus on the issue being debated without personal comments or interruptions. Reason I'm reading that is because a few weeks ago, we had a little issue here that we had some gallery and some people talking over one, each other, and I actually had to say okay one at a time. So I'm, that's the reason I'm reading that. So we'll move forward. First up, we have Travis Canode.
Do I need to come up here?
Yes, and you'll need to.
All right.
Please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Travis Canode, 2014 Winsong Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland. I just have a couple of questions. This came up back in January regarding the schools and overcrowding, traffic and infrastructure, public safety, emergency response. I just wanted to point out that, first, I challenged the assumption that was made earlier regarding the need for more housing, considering the lack of existing infrastructure that we have to support it from the schools, utilities, access roads, et cetera. So in terms of schools and overcrowding, I know this was mentioned in January, but given that the local schools are already over capacity to the tune of several hundred per school, high school, middle, elementary, you know, what commitments are being made to fund school expansions or school construction? And has there been any coordination with the school district to determine how many additional students this development will bring? And what is the plan to address the strain on school resources? Traffic and infrastructure? What is the plan to address the increased congestion on Landis Road? I know there was just mentioned a minute ago about the traffic study in November, but I'm not sure if that was for Landis Road or if it was something, something different. But I think the biggest concern was Landis Road and what that impact would be for that, for the traffic there. And what improvements will be funded to ensure the safety of pedestrians? There's a lot of walkers throughout here from, from, on Landis Road to walk to and from the grocery stores and other, you know, other necessities. People walking from Abbey Lane, from, from the Fairway Meadows development, from the Potomac Ridge condominiums, et cetera. So I guess, you know, there's a concern with people not being able to walk. There's no sidewalks there. With increased traffic on that road, you could, you could, you could have a safety concern. And then has there been any impact analysis on emergency response times, given that fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera, will have to navigate roads that are currently not built to handle the increased traffic? Again, this is under the assumption that that additional access road is not already built, and that all of this would fall on, on Landis. For that, and then I'll try to make it quick. Of course, the concerns for the existing residents, how are they being weighed against the financial interest of the developer? I know there were, I think they said 15 or more concerns brought up back in January. These are just some of the, some of the ones that, that I specifically brought up. But how are they being, how are they being weighed against that of the, you know, the financial interest of those who have already spent millions of dollars for this? And that's really all that happened. Thank you, guys. Yep.
Next up, the Chip, uh, Ryan, Kerry Ryan?
Define tonight, but I'm going to submit written comment within 10 days.
All right. I do. Uh, the, um, I say that right?
Yes. Javed.
My name is Javed.
Excuse me, sir. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now you can state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Javed. I'm 9012 Wild Berry Goat, Boonsboro, Maryland 21713. If we could do the projection, please, so that everybody can see. The projection of the map, please. Or I can show it.
Okay.
Go ahead, you said.
But you'll need the microphone, please. So it's over there, okay.
A couple of quick questions, though. I'm only concerned, my first question is, these purple, these are apartment buildings. Will they be looking this way with the garage on this side? Or they will be looking this way in the garage on this? Because in the rendering, it's not very clear. That's my first question. My second question is, you have spent $5 million to acquire the property on this area. There is, my understanding is that some impact analysis or due diligence is done with regard to traffic analysis on Landis Road, but none of it has been done on this side. Because on this side, you have residential area on this side at this time, a lot of residential here, and somebody mentioned, a lot of people are walking. It's a walking road, day road. And my understanding is that it's 2,000 worshipper in this facility, and the, the road basically butts right here into the, into the main gate, which is here. That's the main gate of this organization. So it's not clear as to what the impact will be on the traffic from dual highway onto this and the water resources, because this is on higher terrain, we're dealing with a lower terrain. So a lot of water resources management study has to be done before even this. And my first question is, Paul talked about phased study, second phase. What is first phase? What is second phase? Thank you.
All right, next up, we have William Wong.
I have some handouts.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And then you can state your name and address, please.
Will you say?
Yeah. Yeah, please.
And the microphone.
Mayors, members of the council. My name is William C. Wong. I'm an attorney here in Hagerstown. My mailing address is 123 West Washington Street. I'm here on behalf of Washington Land Company. And with me is the developer, Mr. Dan Shidi, who has done considerable development in this area. Washington Land Company owns land across Landis Road on the Dow Farm. We're not here in opposition or necessarily in support. We're here to bring something to the attention of the mayor and council. And if you look at the, at the graphics, I'll just go through them one at a time. I think that will make it easier to understand. Anyone who's been on Landis Road understands that there's a sharp left turn followed by an almost immediate sharp right turn from the dual highway across Day Road and back to the Dow Farm. You go by some of the developments that Mr. Shidi has done in the past. If you look at the first page, the highlighted area is the, this is a copy of the development plan that's been submitted in the city, and this is the area of our focus. This is a very limited design detail that we would like to have taken into consideration in the development review process, should this returning to PUDR be granted by the mayor and council. If you look at the second page, this is based on a design by Triad. You'll see some different alignment, slightly in what's in the upper-left corner of the drawing. And you'll see to the north of existing Landis Road and the proposed Landis Road, these are all lands of Washington Land Company. Some of it to the far left is developed into apartments, and if you see the white panhandle going back through the middle of the gray area, Washington Land Company owns undeveloped land on both sides of that right of way. And that's currently zoned in the county for possible future development. The zoning classification is RT residential transition. If you look at the next page, I've drawn in on this graphic the existing alignment of Landis Road, and I've shown this on the drawing, showing what we think would be an alignment that has a little more focus than the general bubble or development plan that's before you, and takes into account some engineering considerations of vertical and horizontal site distances. There's a ridge that comes into play in this vicinity, and this also provides better accommodation for access to the adjacent undeveloped properties, including the lands of Washington Land Company. If you're unfamiliar with the location, if you look at the next page, there's a large photograph showing the first of the two, right angle, turn. photograph showing the first of the two right-angle turns. This is the, the, the objective of the developer that we share is to straighten this. We think some tweaking needs to be done in, in the alignment, and I'm sure this will be done by the city.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to limit that now.
A bare copy of, of the Triad drawing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wong.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Stephanie Mock.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Mock, four four two Westminster Court. Thank you for letting us testify here today and comment on this plan, this proposed plan. I think one thing I want to bring up is the intentionality of this plan. They say they want to focus on the commercial aspect, and yet there's no mock-up of any of the commercial spaces. We only see a mock-up of the townhomes. I think that's important because it shows that their focus is on the residential aspect, even though they want to say, oh, we do care about the commercial and industrial aspect as well. I think it's also worth mentioning that there's no, at least in what we've seen, a build-to-suit option for commercial tenants, of which they say they're already interested in partnering, and it's all this amorphous, oh, we'll have this commercial and industrial partners. I think it's also important to name the developer, which is Washco Developments. We keep saying developer, developer, developer. The reason I want to name the developer is their sister company is Washco Management, which already manages a ton of commercial and residential land in the city and outside of it. One of these is the shops at Sharpsburg Pike, which, if anyone doesn't know that name, that's where the Aldi is across from Cracker Barrel. The reason I bring this up is there's already road infrastructure, Interstate Exchange, homes there, and that commercial space is not even fully built out. So to continue to build more and more commercial space when we're not already utilizing the ones that have the current infrastructure as, along with residential homes, seems a little odd to me. I think additionally, when we look at the road infrastructure, I understand valuing this project and the developer and the partners needing to make a profit. But when the road is valued at five million and the total project is valued at three hundred and fifteen million, that's 1.5% of the project value. So to say that they can't possibly build the road in Phase One seems a little odd to me in terms of economics. I think additionally, when you look at the 2040 long-range transportation plan, Interstate Seventy will be widened to six lanes. We know that's gonna be continued growth. And to continue growth and not build out proper road infrastructure when we know that we've only seen increasing traffic along Seventy, especially coming into Thirty-two B, I think it's important to take that future planning into transportation as well. I think a personal note, or opinion rather, is a strip of grass, it's 2.2 acres, does not really build a community or social fabric for a, a community. A strip of grass doesn't really say anything. I hear no plans of tennis courts or any other athletic fields or playgrounds or et cetera. I think something else to consider is that the Vision Hagerstown 2035 Plan does include agricultural land is important in its plan. And by developing this, we'd lose approximately 25% of the existing agricultural land that's in the city district, and I don't think we need to belittle agricultural land and farmers who work it. Thank you.
Next up. Okay, next up, Sandra Bloom.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you, so please state your name and address for the record.
Sandra Bloom, and I live at two oh two nine Winsong Drive in the Potomac Ridge Community. And I don't have a lot to say. I plan to submit some more detailed written comments within the next ten days. But I think basically, you know, real estate is location, location, location. My main objection to this plan going forward is access, access, access. And that seems to be reiterated in the recommendation from the planning department and also from looking at these documents, the city engineer and the fire and safety authorities also have concerns. And I didn't see where the fire and safety concerns were enumerated, and I'd like to know more about that, because that's one of my major concerns, too. At Potomac Ridge, each dwelling unit has only one ingress egress to Landis Road. I think I didn't get to see the traffic study that was done. I would like to see that and see what those figures are, but some of the research that I have done contradicts what was quoted in the article that was in the Herald Mail. It sounded like the projection was 240 cars per hour at peak with the 400 dwelling units. And I think that is a very, very low ball estimate based on some figures from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. It looks to me like at peak hours, it could be even up to 600 cars an hour. So it's not going to only impact us who already lived in that area. So the concept that this is a N-I-M-B-Y issue is erroneous, because I'm concerned about all the 400, the people who will be living in those 400 units. I mean, they're going to have to live with this, too, if that access road is not designed properly and, and constructed prior to the build-out of this project. Some other things that have come to my attention is that there are many ways, apparently, that this project as designed does not fulfill the PUD criteria. So that's certainly a concern, but my main concern is the access issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Cindy McLean. Is there Cindy?
Cindy. Is that me, McCoin?
I'm sorry, yeah, I look like McLean, but I'm sorry.
Good evening.
If you would raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live at Potomac Ridge, which is a 10-acre property just beside and behind the new development that's being proposed. We have 10 acres, we have 12 buildings. It's probably the largest development in that region 25 years ago. This will be 10 times larger than ours. It has integrated well. We have about 300 to 400 cars that are in our properties of 138 units, and there is not much of a traffic issue for us at this point. I do want to thank Mr. Shawul and his father for all of the development that they have done in Washington County, and I am pleased with the idea of using a mixed development here. That's not the issue for me. The issue, rather, is the project itself and its density in a rural area. I think that what we have in terms of, see, there are 535 proposed dwelling units, over a thousand proposed parking units. That puts a lot of, what am I trying to say, burden on that existing area. And even with that access road, I'm gonna borrow this piece right here. Is it on? Yes. Even with the access road from I-70 to Robinwood, there will then be two four-lane roads, the Lewis Harrison, this one, and then Robinwood. So that means that there will be three traffic lights within the space of one mile. I think that's rather difficult with the traffic that we have now. It's gonna be bumper to bumper. The other thing, I think Mr. Canode has already spoken to, is the, the infrastructure issues and all of the, the water issues, the electric issues, the school issues, the police, the fire. What I'm trying to say at the very end of what I want to say is that I think that the idea is very good. We already have several pods in the area that have worked very well, but I think in this rural area, the idea of such a dense project may be premature until we get the infrastructure put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about pronouncing your last name wrong. Let me do it again. Next up, we got Rick Borstow, is that right? Four six three. Link's U Drive, we have Rick. Okay. Next one is Dan. I can't read the last name, but it's two zero one three nine Landis Road. We'll have Dan either. Okay. Ray by, Ray by Mark Perman. Did I say your last name correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Perman, one four two two three Shelby Circle in Hagerstown. I'd like to speak up on behalf of the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, of which I am the president. We are expressing some serious concerns about the project on behalf of the ISWMD, that is the Islamic Society of Western Maryland. Just to show you that we are a tight-knit religious community, I'm a Jewish leader in the community speaking up on behalf of a Muslim mosque, so we work together very well. The ISWMD is a valued member of the Hagerstown Area Religious Council, an important contributor to the Washington County community. With nearly a thousand members of all ages, the mosque is a bustling place of activities, services, programs, and many programs for children throughout the week, including an after-school program. Our concerns for the Dow Farm Development Plan are twofold. First and foremost is safety, especially for children attending the mosque programs and planned school. The proposed new four-lane road would go right in front of their two driveways, one leading to the mosque and the other to the school buildings, which are frequented and often overflowing with vehicles and pedestrians from the mosque. The amount of traffic the proposed road will add will surely lead to accidents, and we're concerned about the children there and elderly members of the mosque, especially at risk. Second concern is for the sanctuary, is for the house of worship, the sanctity of it. The proposed large new community and especially the proposed road, which butts right up against ISWMD's property on two sides, we are concerned will have a significant negative impact on the peaceful worship of its members. Those of you who are all members of houses of worship know how important that is. The influx of so many people driving by the mosque or walking through the community will be disruptive and surely lead to, we're concerned, more crime and more problems. We're particularly concerned for our Muslim friends, who will be much more visible and could be targeted for their faith and for their cultural background. And finally, after listening to Steve Bachmiller, according to Dr. Sorop, who's an ear, nose, and throat specialist in the area, he had a concern which he thinks should be of concern, the very real possibility of developers failing to complete the commercial portion of the project after building hundreds of residential properties. It would be in the city's, community's best interest to have the commercial portion of the project and the entrance from dual highway built prior to the construction of any residential homes. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Next up, Bill McCollie.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement is made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill McCollie, three four two Landis Road, Hagerstown. I've lived out there for 48 years, nothing but cornfields. I've seen the growth out through February matters to mountain road, all individual homes. And there's a big difference between individual homes and trying to put what I call in this development, a town. That's what they're talking about, buildings and a town. And they're also good exits out of London Town Drive at City Road, and as you know, that's, that's a lot of walking, a lot of kids on bikes, et cetera. And it's not even a lined road. It's just a macadam road. But everybody lives there, respects that, and they know because they're individual property owners. I'm concerned about the number of people. You're talking about 1,200 to 1,500 people, and I know a lot of units like that, there's two families living in them. I can go to West Virginia and show you, I can show you right here in Hagerstown. And they say, well, two cars, we got parking for two cars for every unit. That'll don't work. My grandson lived in one of these for two years, and they couldn't even put the final layer of macadam down because the cars, too many cars, they were everywhere, everywhere. My uncle plowed that road back in the 40s, and they've never, the only thing that's happened to Landis Road is they widened it two feet because of traffic, of course, from London, the, the, the communities that are already there. And I don't know, I don't know how it's gonna handle the traffic. You're talking about another, I'm gonna, I'm gonna low estimate here. If everything sells out, you're talking about 800 to 900 vehicles in that town. And you're talking about commercial properties, people going in and out. Without the direct road to dual lanes, you'll destroy any community that's there already, including fairway acres, the way out to, to mountain road. I'm just talking about people. They like to talk about buildings. I understand your, your tax base. Everyone wants a bigger tax base, they wanna spend more money. I get that, too. But why don't you, why couldn't they do something like, like out in the North End, Arbogate, side-by-side villas? Beautiful layouts, nice homes. You could put 100 of them in there, it wouldn't give you quite as much tax, but they would sell. They would sell. Here, you're just stacking people on top of one another, and you're gonna have problems. We had problems, drug problems on Landis Road. One, one of my friends, who's a neighbor, they were using a empty stump on his, his property for a drug drop. He pounded one day, and he, he's talking my drum, he says, Billy, see, he said, I had a drug drop on my thing, called the, call the deputy sheriff and deputy come out, and you know what the deputy did? This is funny. He said, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna take the drugs.
Can we wrap this up?
And I'll put, I'll just put, leave my call to say, if you want my drugs, give me a call, if you want your drugs back. Anyhow, it's a people concern.
All right, we need to wrap this up.
They're not addressing that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that was the last one on the list. Anybody that's not signed up? And will we just, all right, okay? State your name and, well, I heard you first.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Thank you.
My name is Conway Barnes. My mailing address is 11-800 St. Mary's Court, Smithburg. And we own property that is only 30 feet away from the commercial and industrial area. Is Derek Bosler, Borstler here? No, okay.
I'm loud enough, I don't need that.
That's, I took with a TV.
Okay, Mr. Borstler's lane is right here. We own this property. Yeah, we own this property right here. There's 19 acres there. It is literally 30 feet away from an industrial area. What zoning, what does that zoning permit to be built? What zoning, what does that zoning permit to be built? That's my, my only question.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you have an answer for that?
Yeah, you're gonna have to ask over here.
Hey. Mary, you want me to respond?
I would, yes, please.
The zoning ordinance, um... I'm sorry, one of the charts in section Z. As you go to the very far right of those charts is a column for the PUDR, and that'll give you the list of uses. So if somebody wants to follow up and look at it in more detail, it can be found on our website on the land management code. The concern is what would be the, the industrial type uses that theoretically could be placed in there? And I'll just go through a quick list of them. Wholesale and retail sales of products manufactured, stored on the premises in conjunction with another principal use. That's kind of vague. Basically, you can do a retail store if you have like some sort of warehouse or something on the site. Warehouse flex space, provided that the warehouse space does not exceed more than fifty percent of the total gross floor area, so you can have a combination of like service business offices, but also some warehouse type use in the same building. Vocational rehabilitation services, specialty trade contractors, such as somebody operating a plumbing company or electrician's company, things like that. Research and development, offices and laboratories, including physical, chemical, and biological subjects, so it's kind of an office park use. Light manufacturing, when the interior space is twenty-five thousand square feet in gross or less in gross floor area. So as long as the, the manufacturing facility is less than roughly, little more than half of an acre under roof, that would be capped at twenty-five thousand square feet. Indoor plant cultivation and processing facilities, again capped at twenty-five thousand square feet, but I believe I would defer to Kathy if that's being changed. She's the one who's handling the, the indoor growing issues. Uh, carp, I'm sorry. Yes, it would be impacted. Carpet and upholstery cleaning services, breweries, wineries, and distilleries with interior space of twenty-five thousand square feet or less, and adult daycare with vocational centers, such as a place where it would take adults who need supervision and provide them vocational training. It's very limited, and so when, when people think of industrial, most industrial uses are actually cut out of this because these are intended to be mixed-use developments with commercial and residential very close by. So the vast majority of the potential industrial uses that you might find in our industrial zoning districts will not be permitted here. It's a limited number of uses. Um, I'm not gonna get into the commercial ones because I was asked specifically about, you know, the industrials, so.
Was that all the permitted or the permitted and by special exception?
I believe they are all permitted by rights.
Are there any special exception uses that are identified for the industrials and within that zone?
Um, there are no special exception uses at all in the PUDR. It's either permitted by right or it's not permitted.
Do you have a landscape requirement for any industrial laws and...
Yes, that's, that's a good point. Keep in mind, too, that what we're dealing with here is the zoning, settling the zoning for the development. As I mentioned earlier in the process, when they, when a developer goes through and implements the zoning scheme, they still will have to comply with all of the requirements of our land management code, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision land development ordinance as far as design expectations, buffers between industrial and residential and commercial type uses, things of that nature. So you don't have to worry about an industrial building being, you know, fifteen feet from a property line right across from a residential use.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. See why we got a great city staff today? Had to answer right away.
There's one.
I know. Okay. Thanks, Steve. All right, is there one more? All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Curtis Ray. I live at one, seven, nine, one, eight College Road, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Y'all come over here real quick. I want, I want you to be able to see what I'm about to point out here.
Hey, Don.
So I believe that we should have growth in our county, but we need to have a good compromise. Nobody seems to want, or everybody seems to want, this road built first, right? So instead of working from the top down, which I'm guessing that is your primary plan, why don't we start from the bottom up? And the reason I say that is because then you're gonna have to build this first, and then if you build the industrial first, that gives you the reason to actually build this, you'll get your hundred million. This is probably gonna become a flex warehouse plus whatever RADA goes in there. And then the reason you want to do this first is because you'll probably put in the warehouse and the industrial last, because if you bought a townhouse, be it a single-family or a townhouse, you're probably not gonna look at the zoning chart, right? You'll probably buy the house without thinking that there's going to be a warehouse built, right? So it's like a catch-22. You're, you're gonna dupe someone.
We're not sure.
I'm, I'm sorry. That was just the, that was just the reasoning behind my point. And if you go from the bottom up, it's a sweet compromise, because then you also get the taxes from the commercial right away, and you don't have to worry about this getting built now, because it's now first on the agenda. So that would solve so many problems, and that's a decent compromise in life. And that's all this should be, is a compromise. We need growth in our county. We can't stifle growth. I, if we do, then everyone will get priced out of their homes from property tax, or there'll be no way for your families to stay here and have their own roots. But I would also state that instead of townhouses, why don't we make them single-family houses? Because townhouses inevitably, in my opinion, become rentals. That, that tends to be the biggest rental market for a real estate magnet to buy, because they're always tried and true through any form of recession or depression, rentals are amazing. But if we make these single families, it prevents any form of rentals from taking over the neighborhood. And then we're also able to maintain a nice way of life in this area, because if they're townhomes, townhomes sometimes breed pretty heavy crime. An example would be Locust Street. Um, what's another one? Those are all townhomes. McDowell Avenue, Jonathan Street. These are some pretty heinous areas, and they're all townhomes. So come in thirty, forty years, this could be a breeding ground for criminal activity. But if they're single-family homes, we can prevent that from even happening, because it's very hard for crime to take root in single-family homes. But with that, I see the rest of my time. Tense.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Jim Dow, sixty-four, seventeen Pride Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city for supporting this project as it's done for the many, many years. It's, it's great to finally see it get to this point. It's been more than, like, twenty-five years, I guess, for us being involved in this. Your staff has been wonderful. Their questions have been critical, which is good, because it makes us think and respond. I'd like to see tonight the community expressing their concerns, so we can address those concerns. Our family's been involved here for a hundred and fifty years with various forms, and I think we've listened to people in the past and what's required. I would like to see us continue to do that and like us to say thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statement made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And then state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Madge Morningstar. I don't live here in Washington County. I'm just a spit over the river in Shepherdstown, Forty-Fourth Sage Place, but I grew up here on Virginia Avenue. I went to Surrey Elementary School before the roof caved in. My family has lived here for generations. My great-grandfather's photo is hanging downstairs as we speak. My family still lives here, so I'm deeply invested in Hagerstown and this community. I know there's a lot of issues and questions people have, which I think is normal and healthy and good. My only issue is the access road. I drive on Landis Road all the time. I, it, it's inconceivable to me how we can even consider causing the degree of traffic, both for construction and the first four hundred homes. For the people who live there now, and that is their only way in and out of that community, my family members included, it just really seems like people could literally be trapped there. And, I mean, that's not good for safety, it's not good for emergency workers. And aside from emergencies, just, you know, people getting to work, people getting to school, you know, everybody's already doing the best they can in their lives. Everyone's maxed out. Are we gonna ask people to, you know, add another half hour to their, their plan just to get in and out of their community? It just seems unsafe and it just, it's, it seems crazy that we're asking the residents to pay this cost, because the developers say they can't afford to put in the road that I think everyone agrees is necessary. The initial arguments for why we should have faith that they're gonna put the road in at some point, and the arguments for why they can't do it now, seem to come down to poor financial planning on their part. And I just can't believe that that's true. It, it seems like people who are undertaking such a huge endeavor and have put so much effort into it, it just is hard for me to believe that at some point they didn't think, gee, we should set some money aside to build this road so our construction vehicles can come and go, and so the, the first homeowners can come and go. So I just have to wonder if it isn't strategic, if they're not, I mean, if we think about it, they're gonna put the, the town, the, the city and the community in a position where we have to do something. Whether or not they want to pay for it, we're gonna have to do something. So at some point, yes, I believe someone is gonna pay to put a road in there, but I, I don't have any faith that it's gonna be them, and I don't have any faith that it's gonna be soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is our motions. Well, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you need to say something? Yeah, I have a couple. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's it. That's okay. I think it's easiest, for me at least, to sort of go through the memo that you provided. And what I would note in each of those sections, the first and probably the most important is page one, where you have in bold, all capital letters, that the recommendation of the planning commission is to deny the proposed plan. I think that we seek their guidance and review and evaluation on these types of proposals for a reason. I think that we could certainly consider the facets under which they considered the attributes of the proposal and why they denied it. And I want to go through those, because you've outlined a number of those in your staff memo. One of the important ones for me on page two is a sentence that says, "A proposed amendment to the annexation agreement's list of conditions is under review by the city attorney. The agreement approval is required by both the city and the property owners for any revision to the agreement." As I said in our meeting, I believe in January, it seems odd to me that we would be having a hearing on a development proposal whose subject matter is largely hinged upon the conditions enumerated in that annexation agreement, probably the largest of which, and I realize, you know, the development type is different, as you indicate, but probably the largest is, in that annexation agreement, it was fairly clear that the city wanted the access road to the dual highway from the outset. And that's, that's enumerated and repeated in just about every page of your staff report. So I don't know that, that I could consider a proposal that I see on a piece of paper that may be, at the end of the day, contradictory to what this body will decide on what it may or may not change to the annexation agreement. If it doesn't change, and we've already moved forward with approving something that is then contradictory to the conditions that we choose to retain in the existing annexation agreement.
Um, one of, when we were, before you previously and in workshop with Mr. Flynn, we were working on the annexation agreement issue, and you brought this up at that time, that they should be, they should basically be processed at the same time, seeing that they're related to one another. So that's where we're at now. That process is still ongoing. As you go through your deliberations on this rezoning, ultimately, that issue with the, with the annexation agreement is going to have to be resolved before you could, if you were inclined to approve this, before you could approve this rezoning. So you'll, we, we, we have responded to the direction from this body where they are now kind of going hand-in-hand with one another, but ultimately, you're gonna, this body's gonna need to work out with the applicant what is mutually agreeable in revising the the annexation agreement, because it's, the existing one is written such a way where both parties have to agree to any changes. So as a result, what will happen is, is ultimately, this body and the applicant will need to work those things out to mutual satisfaction before you could act on this zoning.
And again, that's why I think it's odd that we're evaluating a development proposal that is opposite the existing annexation agreement. We haven't had a discussion on consideration for any changes to the primary conditions identified in that, where we clearly know the applicant's going to come in and ask for that reversal to occur.
And the applicant is also operating under this, under the situation that they're looking to amend the annexation agreement for the purposes of moving this development forward. So it's kind of a chicken-and-egg kind of arrangement. And as a result, that's, it's probably a good thing that Councilmember Alshire pointed out at the workshop, is that these things should go hand-in-hand and be considered simultaneous. But ultimately, when a decision is made, you can't approve the zoning unless it's coincides with the annexation agreement, which means that has to be amended first. Could be two minutes before, but that would have to be acted on first before the zoning could.
So on page three, item one, planned unit development, there's a sentence under purpose that says, it sort of outlines, but requires integrated design and appropriate transitions to surrounding existing land uses and promotes a diverse mix of housing options. It is not intended for single types of land use or segregated land uses into dedicated pods. And then you state at the end, basically, through here, the mayor council needs to make that decision based on the map we've been provided. But you go back to the page before, and it says there's twenty single-family dwelling, which is roughly three percent of the total dwelling units. If, if these are the total dwelling units, and I couldn't tell that because there's a statement here, and I think you brought it up a bit ago, where it says mixed-use commercial slash residential area. Are the residential units under that specific line item in the light brown color, are they included in the totals above, or they, or are there units in addition to the totals in the three identified columns?
It's my understanding, well, things have changed here, because when we came into this meeting, we, we were under the understanding that the purple was exclusively apartments.
Okay.
We're now being told that the first floor is gonna be commercial. So I don't have a straight answer for you for that, to be honest with you.
I'm reading a piece of paper that says it's four hundred and fifty, roughly four hundred and fifty units. What I want to know is, is that the number, or are there a number of unidentified additional units under the mixed-use commercial residential area determination in the light brown color?
I don't believe we ever received an actual number on those, because that's somewhat in flux. There are, there is a number in the plan that was processed or sent out to you all prior to the meeting that talks about the number of apartment units, but it was our understanding that would be exclusively apartment buildings in that purple area, which we now understand to be different.
So that's fairly important.
I don't believe we ever received an actual number on those because that's somewhat in flux. There are, there is a number in the plan that was, uh, processed or sent out to you all prior to the meeting that talks about the number of apartment units, but it was our understanding that would be exclusively apartment buildings in that purple area, which we now understand to be different.
So that's fairly important because in the very next paragraph, it says, "The mayor and council shall only approve a concept plan." And then it basically talks about the generalization of numbers. But if we approve a concept plan with the understanding of the numbers that have been enumerated, but then it goes on to say it's general, what's to say at the end of the day, the 20 single-family units become two? And the additional unidentified mixed-use commercial residential area adds another 50 or another 100 apartments? And then the development has went from 450 units, let's say 550, at the end of the day. It's, it's odd to me that we would approve a concept where there would be that much uncertainty and flexibility as it applies to the impact then to the infrastructure that we're also waiting.
If this body is to approve, uh, the, uh, the zoning overlay and adopt in whatever form the zoning exhibit is that becomes the official exhibit for this, it'll be the responsibility of your planning staff and the planning commission to ensure that the development is in substantial conformance with this exhibit. Is there going to be some minor deviations here and there? Yes, but is that 20 units, uh, single-family homes going to go down to two? No, it won't.
I, I don't know that because in this deliberation this evening, we have two different interpretations of what we've been presented between staff and the applicant.
Uh, it sounds like you have.
I'm trying to be clear, you know, as I'm conveying it to the public of, of what that enumeration is.
We've been clear that this is single-family.
I got that part.
It'll be opposite the single-family land.
I got that.
That's been required from the city since we started this project. Is it, the breakdown says 20. 395 townhomes, that's the area in blue, that's phase one.
Yeah. So, so I'm sure, I am sure that there are words and numbers and statistics and sentences on this piece of paper we have. Um, but this is the document we're provided, and I don't know about anybody else, but I can't read any of it. Uh, so, so, you, that's, that's the information that we're, we're being given, and I'm going from this report and a plan I can't read.
When you say can't read, it's due to the size of the language.
Yeah, I mean, it's, can anybody else read it?
No.
I'm sure Fox and Associates would be happy to provide plans of that size for, uh, for the, for the mayor and council.
Was the PDF in the packet eligible? Well, I realize that's printed.
Yeah.
Was the PDF?
This is the stuff we have for us this evening.
Yeah. Yeah. The electronic version, um, which would have been provided in your electronic packet.
Zoom into.
You can zoom into it, yeah.
Yeah. So that speaks to the item of single types of land use where, like I said, based on the unknown number at this point of the six different categories provided, uh, maybe 3% is single-family home. That to me does not, uh, identify our charge of ensuring that there are a mix of residential u- units. Uh, 90%, one thing, 10% another, isn't what I would have envisioned, what we are trying to accomplish in the PUD design.
And when the body deliberates this, that is definitely a valid discussion.
Right, that's the question you ask of us this evening, is if we believe that's the case. So I'm answering that, that question.
Okay.
It says, "In their analysis, the mayor and council will need to determine whether this intent of mixed-using uses and housing types has been met." The second is, we need to decide whether they are segregated into dedicated pods or they are an actual mixed-use neighborhood, like you would find in any general established neighborhood within the city, right? And when you look at this piece of paper, you know, you can clearly see that somebody has colored the areas in absolutely segregated ways. There is no mixed use. There are these sets of townhomes that go in this specific section. There are these sets of single families that only go in this section, and there are these apartments that go in this section. There, there is no intermingling of that, uh, of different housing types within the overall makeup of this 100-acre neighborhood. They're clearly separated out.
Steph has no comment on that this evening. The purpose of this evening is to take the testimony. When you deliberate, begin deliberations after you've closed your hearing, that's, I think, a very valid question to ask.
I just know most of the folks here won't be here for those deliberations. Uh, the next page, page four, under B, location, uh, first paragraph is omitted. So there's a number of paragraphs that are omitted through this report, and I don't know whether that's omitted because it's unnecessary to our deliberation.
It's unnecessary. A lot of it deals with the PUDV, which this isn't, that kind of thing.
Okay. So in that though, it says that, uh, "Such development shall front on a collector or arterial street." But then it goes on to say the track does front on I-70. The problem is it's never going to have access on I-70. So I think that, that the spirit of that fronting on the arterial street isn't just for visibility, but for accessibility. And it says it will connect to the dual highway. But what I heard here this evening is it may connect 10 years from now, uh, or 10 years from when the development begins to the dual highway, uh, on this, um, delineation that's provided on this plan. And when I look at this delineation, one of the questions that I have repeatedly wondered is there's nothing across the dual highway. In other words, I work in Myersville, so I drive this twice a day, right? And so I understand what it's like to sort of cut off onto Hebb or, or Day or the others, um, or try to get out when 40 and 70 is blocked up and you're trying to get through. Um, but when I look at this, it looks like it does dump onto the dual highway. So you can get access off the dual and you can get access onto the dual. But I'm trying to think of, uh, our recent, uh, development requirements when we approved the warehouses that now exist on, what is it, Howe Road? We made that road come out to the dual highway and have a fully, like, signalized intersection where cars can get in and out from all directions. So my curiosity, when I see this concept of it possibly accessing the dual highway at some point in the future, there's no indication that it's going to be a full access road. And if that is the case, or that, excuse me, is the expectation, then I would want some, at least some assurance in this concept stage that that's what Maryland State Highway Administration has indicated will happen. Because I also take 70 sometimes and I get off at this ramp, and I'm just looking at the merge link of that ramp with where this, what to me looks like a right-in, right-out sort of configuration right now is, uh, for access to the dual, and how that's going to function. And I just think that that's one of those basic infrastructure questions that we should have answered, uh, before we approve the possibility that may happen at some point 10-plus years down the road.
I believe Mr. Poppenberger would be happy to provide additional information within the next 10-day period, uh, that addresses, uh, some of that. Do keep in mind that when this was initially proposed for a major regional shopping center, there was, was going to be a fully operational, every-direction interchange in the initial concept stage, based on the traffic volumes that were proposed, which were much higher than what they're proposing here.
So are you indicating in that response that this could be a right-in, right-out? At the end of the day?
I am deferring that ultimately to the State Highway Administration, Mr. Poppenberger.
You obviously understand that would absolutely be not what this body would understand would be happening. Because that changes the entire complexity of the response that we have for the public that, that has the assumption that we're going to have sort of fully signalized intersection here. At the end of the day, it might end up being a right-in, right-out, which you might as well say all 800 vehicles are going to go out on, on Landis every day because they're not going to have that accessibility.
Again, the, I'd not, uh, the, you would really need to have that conversation with Mr. Poppenberger as the engineer on the project.
Okay. So in the next section C, it says, in a part of that, under staff enumeration, says, "The applicant states that they request the approved overlay zone, or overlay to include the potential of all uses listed as permitted in Article 4, Section Z2, and the PUDR district be permitted in this development." And the reason I asked that about the industrial, uh, zoning earlier was because I kind of read that sentence to imply that they wanted all the things that are both permitted and by special exception to simply be permitted by right. Is that not true?
There are no special exception uses in the PUD districts. It's either permitted by right or not. As far as industrial uses go, the vast majority of industrial uses that we would think of that are permitted in our industrial zoning districts are not permitted here. It's a very limited, very low-key type of things that, uh, are permitted in the industrial district are permitted in the PUD. And the intent was is to create truly as much of a mix of uses as possible. And when these provisions were created a few years ago, the thought was, well, why not have, as, as their employers, as long as they're not a use that has a lot of potential to bother what's around them, why not allow some very limited industrial zoning district uses in the PUD?
Give me like an in-house growth facility.
Yeah, it's a building. I mean, you know, that kind of thing. Um, th- there's a lot of commercial uses that are not permitted in, in the PUD in addition to most industrial. So they went, uh, we went through the process of saying, does this seem like this could possibly fit in a mixed-use development? And again, it's only like about maybe eight or nine, I think, industrial-type uses that are permitted by right in, in the, uh, in the PUD.
Okay. On page five, under item three, um, it says that water and wastewater facilities are available if it's determined for some reason, and it doesn't define what those reasons are. In the future, the water and wastewater services cannot be provided, the site, the PUD would be void. Find that a bit vague, um, to say for some reason. Uh, and, and I say that because, uh, and I don't know if Nancy's here, but, um, I believe this is in zone six, is that correct?
No, this is then our base zone, zone one.
Okay, so this had, this would have no, so zone six is north and east.
We, we, we don't have a water zone six. We have, zone five is, um, Black Rock, um.
That's what I want to know.
Yeah, that's zone five, yeah.
So this is base zone, it, uh, is looped into the system. Okay, so there are, there are not the requisite pressure concerns, uh, and these would not facilitate any additional potential pressure concerns for the adjoining zone.
Not for the water system and the wastewater system's already been addressed with the pump station 33.
Okay.
So we were clear, the city would not allow this development to be developed without public water and wastewater.
Yeah.
And that's where, that's what the statement was. If for some reason they can't get water and wastewater, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I don't worry so much about quantity, uh, as I do, uh, pressure.
Right.
Uh, in, in this specific area. Um, and then, uh, just, uh, another point, actually two. On the bottom of that says, "Planning commission have advised that to have over 400 units accessed by two points on a single rural country road is ill-advised." And I think that speaks to, to part and parcel to their overall, uh, recommendation for denial. But under item five, um, I found it odd that it says that, um, basically if, if there's a time extension, uh, for the PUD, that it can be extended, uh, agreed to by the planning commission and not the mayor and council. So that's the time extension not a change.
Time extension, yes, that's, that's written in, that's the language of the ordinance.
Okay. There's a section on page six, under your comments, says, "The zoning exhibit provides the required items in the list of six elements. This list is omitted here for brevity." Um, are, does that, do you have that documentation and sort of how each?
In a pre-written format, no. We went through the ordinance and we identified the issues. Keep in mind that this staff report already is like 12 pages long. If we went through and did everything in detail, this would be about a 30-page report. I don't think you want that. So, um, we did, uh, kind of pare it down, um, to, to the, to the high points. But if you want an item-by-item list of analysis, we can provide that.
I only say that because it sounds like these are the six elements we're supposed to be considering. As it applies to consideration for approval of the concept plan. It says, "The zoning exhibit attached here too is that concept plan. The following paragraph of the ordinance text ends with a list of six requirements for the plan. The zoning exhibit provides the required items in this list of six elements, but that list is omitted here for brevity." And so for me, like, if we're, if those are the elements we're supposed to be basing the approval of the plan on, I would want to know what they are.
I can make sure you get that.
Okay. Um, and then the next paragraph down, it talks about the draft forest stand delineation was not submitted. Um, this speaks to, I think, the, the plan that's been provided as it applies to the open space. And, and I have to say, you know, when you look at this plan, uh, you have, uh, uh, at least I have some curiosity why the large green area on the right is sort of delineated the way it is. Uh, I imagine that that follows some topographical, uh, information, probably some low-lying area. Uh, and as you are clearly aware of, my, uh, prior concerns of that is that in such large developments, the city often gets left with this. That the open space is wrapped up in forest retention, stormwater management, and nonusable land. And when we talk about a 600 or 700-unit development that's on the outskirts of the city, we absolutely should not be left with those remainder tracks. And even in the PUD, it says that it's supposed to incorporate that in two ways. One, passive and active recreational green space. And two, some type of hardscape, uh, right amenity. Well, the hardscape is supposed to be later identified at some point by the commercial space, which we have no, uh, design concept, uh, been provided on. And the green space is this strip of land between the main thoroughfare. And I, I don't understand how that's usable green space. And then you have these two pieces of green space that are where the S-curve, you know, the, the tightest part of the road is, is saying they're going to revise. That's where the green space is, um, or down in this corner, um, without any sort of delineation of whether this is going to be accomplished separately. Because I think in a later segment of this, it says that, uh, the developer's going to have to explain, uh, why the 5.7 acres of, um, stormwater management are an amenity space to be able to be included in that 10% that they need to meet that design requirement. And I don't know that from any of this because all these are, are greens delineations on a map. They don't tell me whether or not that's usable space we're getting or what the amenity, you know what I mean? Components are going to be, which I think are important for a PUD and for a development of that size.
Are you looking for me to address this?
I don't know, I'm looking to address it as much as I am trying to identify those points that you raise because most of these are in the, the underlined, um, sections of, uh, the staff report. So I think for me, maybe on that particular point is just to speak to the separation of stormwater management, actual usable open space, and forestation being provided on-site, um, to the degree required.
Okay. I'll, I'll point out that the, the central green 2.2 acres, uh, to give you a comparable of what we, and this, this is a recommendation that we made to them because they didn't have this in their initial versions. Uh, think of Greenwich Park, where you ride in Greenwich, the main drive of Greenwich Park, and what do you have? You have a Central Park area down the middle with houses lining either side, without driveways, without garages. Uh, now that one is more than 2.2 acres, but it gives you an idea of what the intent was in designing it this way. Um, the stormwater area is a flat area. It could serve a dual purpose. But again, this gets into design issues. And the way this PUD process was structured and adopted was, we're dealing here with essentially the zoning. And then ultimately, the, the, the actual design issues, working out the nuts and bolts, making sure that it complies with, uh, the requirements of the ordinance would ultimately fall to the planning commission in reviewing and approving subdivision plots and, and, and site plans based on the zoning adopted in this process.
So when I read on page eight, under special design requirements in the PUDR overlay, it says, under item three, it says under item three, that we're supposed to be considering that mixture of green and hardscape, open space amenities, and that the planning commission and the mayor and council may consider a design that contains such features as only on one side of the street scape, the housing types not being mixed or segregated. And when I read elsewhere in the staff report, which is a very good point, of the concerns that we've had with the front-loaded townhouse units and the concerns with pedestrian safety to traverse those sidewalks, I can't help but look at this sort of center green strip and go, if we're concerned about pedestrian safety on the sidewalks along the fronts of the houses, we should certainly be concerned that the green space is in the middle of the main thoroughfare of the proposed development for access pedestrian, especially for younger users.
We don't have a specific design on what the improvements to that central area would be. Think of a village green as basically the thought of it, mostly a passive open space area, maybe a gazebo or something in it, something to create a visual focal point for the nature of the development. Things like pot lots and things like that would most likely be in the other open space areas as well. Keep in mind too, that with the townhouses, there's also going to be some narrow open space behind the units, because the townhouse units can't back up to other private properties. They're required to back up to either alleys or to green space. So the green that you see here is not all of the green space that would be required by the development. There would be some degree of an open space behind every townhouse unit.
So if you go to the bottom of that page, your last sentence under C, it says, there is an area reserved for open space and forest conservation that serves as a buffer between the residential area and the industrial, commercial areas. We talked about that a little bit ago, when somebody asked about the industrial and about the buffer. I want to make sure that what we're not saying is that the buffer between industrial development and residential happens to be the park. Does that make sense? Because that's exactly what it seems to say here, is that we're going to put our parks next to the big industrial property. And then you go further down in D, and it says, unless specifically designed to be a community amenity or natural feature, it shall not be comprised of accumulations of leftover remnants of land on the site. And that's, I can't help but look at the left side of that site and the remnants of land that are identified in green. The next page talks to that very point of the stormwater management. It says for all or part of the five point seven acre, that these elements are intended to make it usable for some form of community amenity or natural feature. I feel like when you're identifying that as staff to us, you're identifying that to say, Mayor Council, you need to consider this specific item. And again, I can't consider that unless I know, you know, the questions associated with the green space that's identified. And you use a very good reference that I do recall, we eventually took over, which was Terps Park, which was a very good usable green space, you know, as part of that development design. I know that the applicant spoke to this, but at the end of that page, it says, the mayor and city council shall not approve a PUDR overlay proposal that is not predominantly non-residential and mixed-use in nature. And I highlighted that because this evening, there appears to be some confusion on two items. One, that it appears there's more residential, you know what I mean, identified in that area of the two lower colors that we haven't ascertained any type of conceptual plan for. And then I don't know, you know, because I know that the proposed developer says, you know, well, the value, you know, the monetary, the taxable value is going to be larger proportionally compared to the residential component. But clearly, if that is even more residential, then the residential component is even larger than those five hundred and fifty units possibly that are sighted. And I think that, you know, I don't have an answer to that unless it's clear on what that number and percentage is. And then on the last, or page eleven, I just want to point out, under other considerations, and I think that this is very pointed, is the ongoing issue with observation of vehicle pedestrian conflicts in the garage front townhouse developments. While we don't have any provision against it, there is nothing to say that we cannot as a body, sitting here, make that condition of any type of changes in that PUD proposal.
That's correct. I'll point out that there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits people from developing garage front townhouses right now. Planning commission and staff have identified this as a concern, but as far as this PUD, this is discretionary act. So if that is a concern to you, and you're implying not to approve it because of that, or require them to be rear-loaded parking, that is within your purview to require in this situation.
So I appreciate that. And I wanted to address a couple of items that were brought up by the commenters this evening. The first is the school overcrowding. I would only say this, when I was a county commissioner in two thousand and eight, we identified and had a plan to proceed with placing new schools behind what is known as the IBM property, further west on the dual highway. I was not invited back to that position, so I don't know what happened to those plans after I was removed from that position, but they are certainly needed. But here's the reality, the city does not control schools. We do not control the districting of county students or the construction of county schools in this county. We certainly cannot remain idle in plans to proceed with development of the city based on a factor that we absolutely do not control. We also don't control requirements for county roads, such as Landis Road. The city requires sidewalks on all city streets, and so, you know, that's the degree to which we require roads to be built in the city. And what we weigh in the interest of our residents or in the interest of city residents, that is our first and foremost charge. I agree, I think it would be good to know which way the apartment space. And again, I bring up the access, this design to Day Road. I mean, that to me has to be first and foremost, but I just, I still don't see how it's supposed to loop in sort of across Day Road, possibly come out on the dual, may or may not be a right-in, right-out. I just think that that's the biggest question that I have. And I also appreciate the individual who brought up the comments about thinking about the development on the north side. I don't think that that was anywhere in my scope of thought process. And so I think that that is absolutely important as it applies to the change in that S curve, and certainly as it applies to where we would put green space in and near and around such potentially busy road sections. And also, I think, brought up the point, and I think there is some confusion here this evening, where are the mockups for the commercial component? It's hard for us to approve an entirety of a concept plan if we only have half the plan that developer plans to build right now. And that's all I have.
Anybody else? I'll make sure you have the entirety of the language without the omissions that we cut out for brevity. Most of them don't fly, but when you start deliberating, you'll have the entire.
Okay, before we move on to motions, I got a request for a bedroom break. Do we need to motion that?
Go to recess. Sure.
Do I need to call motion board or just, okay. I'm going to call for a quick recess for about five minutes.
All right. Thanks for bearing with us, pulling up, but we had to, had to take care of something. I need a motion to keep public record open for ten days on, on.
You don't need a motion. You don't need a motion. Just a statement.
Just statement? Okay. All right. We're gonna keep the public record open for ten days on the, the, that woods.
All three of them, actually.
Yeah, all three of them. You're right. Okay. Next up, we are in our motions. First one, approval of amendments.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on February fourth, twenty twenty five, February eleventh, twenty twenty five, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Motion passes. Next up, approval of an ordinance, amend the city code by repealing and reenacting chapter. Sorry, what?
Consent.
Well, I don't have that one. It's buried. Never mind. It's underneath. Hold on. Okay. All right. Next up, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all consent agenda be approved as presented.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Approval of an ordinance, amending city code by repealing chapter two twenty four, tax sale property repurpose program and reenacting chapter two twenty four with amendments. Well, I'm, my, mine's all messed up then. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. You got it?
You've had a long day.
I know. Okay. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code by repealing and reenacting chapter one forty, the land management code.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to amend the city code by repealing and reenacting chapter one forty, land management code. The reenacted land management code includes a collection of annual revisions for twenty twenty four finalized by the mayor and city council. This reenacted version of the land management code shall be known as version three point twelve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And the right one now. Huh? Yes. Approval of an ordinance, amending city code by repealing chapter two twenty four, tax sale property repurpose program and reenacting chapter two twenty four with amendments.
Mr. Mayor, we move for the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by repealing chapter two thirty four, two twenty four, tax sale property repurpose program and reenacting chapter two twenty four with amendments. Specifically, the amendments will, one, expand nonprofit organization definition and add clarifying definitions, two, establish process on withholding properties from tax sale administered by Washington County Treasurer, three, clarify end user selection process, four, codify good standing for end user eligibility, five, exempt properties from zoning nonconformity timelines during city ownership.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, amend the city code of, or, amend this code of the city of Hagerstown by adding and amending sections of chapter sixty four, building construction, article three thereof, property maintenance standards.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that mayor and council, mayor and city council approve ordinance, ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter sixty four, article three, by adding or amending sections to the chap, to chapter sixty four, building construction, article three, property maintenance standards, which provides definitions, includes swimming, swimming pools as unsafe equipment systems and codifies unused pools, nuisance, unused pools and abandoned pools, given the city and the, the city, the city the authority to abandon such hazards after established timelines related to the swimming pool safety.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an ordinance, quit claim of an alley right of way.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of ordinance to quit claim a portion of an unimproved alley right of way at the rear of five twenty eight East Franklin Street. The alley was previously quit claimed in nineteen seventy three when the city council determined that it was no longer needed for a public purpose, but no deed was recorded at that time to convey the right of way to this adjoining, adjoining property.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance, add chapter one eighty six nuisance abandoned vehicles to the city code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and county, city council introduce an ordinance to add chapter one eighty six nuisance abandoned vehicles to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This added chapter will establish abandonment programs to remove abandoned vehicles from properties, creates, create process to notify property owners and regular vehicle owners of the abandoned vehicle, establish the ability for owner to reclaim their vehicle after abandonment, provide exemptions on how to maintain abandonment, abandonment vehicles on real property.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance, quit claim of an alley right of way.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to quit claim a portion of alley number one thirty five adjacent to properties occupied by Washington County Transit. To allow for future expansion of their facilities, the city council has determined that this alley is no longer needed for a public purpose.
A second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution authorizing the execution of a perpetual and permanent easement between the city of Hagerstown and Bowman Spielman Group LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of resolution authorizing the execution of a perpetual and permanent easement between the city of Hagerstown and Bowman Spielman LLC, developer for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, operating, repairing and replacing water lines and facilities on land situated near the intersection of Spielman and Lappin, Lappins Roads and Williamsport, Maryland.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A resolution authorizing the execution of a perpetual and permanent easement between the city of Hagerstown and Bowman Group LLP.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a perpetual and permanent easement between the city of Hagerstown and Bowman Group LLP, developer for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, operating, repairing and replacing water lines and facilities on land situated near the intersection of Spielman and Lappins Road in Williamsport, Maryland.
Can I get a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution establishing parking facility rates and fees, special event rates applicable to Hub City Garage and University District Parking Decks only.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve a special event parking rate for ten dollars and no cents in the Hub City Garage located at fifty West Antietam Street and special event parking for the rate of five dollars and no cents in the University District Parking Deck located at twenty five North Potomac Street. The special event parking rates shall occur when city staff anticipates that an event at Meredith's Park will, will produce vehicle parking which will occupy seventy five percent or more of Hub City Garage. The special event parking rates will override the rates otherwise in effect in both parking facilities.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Acceptance of a pedestrian easement.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to an accept an easement from Habitat for Humanity for a public sidewalk that will be constructed across private properties at McCleary Hill Development along with West Washington Street.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Got that. Motion passes.
Approval of resolution twenty twenty five summer camp program. Mr. Mayor, we move for the approval of a resolution to authorize the execution of contracts with the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., Hagerstown YMCA and the Robert W. Johnson Community Center to operate summer play camps for the twenty twenty five season. Funding amounts for each camp shall be as follows: Boys and Girls Club, nineteen thousand five hundred, Girls Inc., twenty two thousand, Hagerstown YMCA, eighteen thousand five hundred, Robert W. Johnson Community Center, fifteen thousand.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of flying boxcar fireworks scheduled for twenty twenty five.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an extension of Invest Hagerstown City. Uh-oh, are you on a different one? All right.
Never mind.
Hold on, mine's is. Wait, wait, wait.
There you go. Yeah.
It's rewinding. Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that mayor and city council approve ten regular season fireworks shows after the flying boxcar games on the following dates. April twenty fifth, May ninth, May twenty third, June sixth, June twentieth, July eighteenth, August eighth, August twenty second, August twenty nine, September twelfth. Mayor and city council's approval will exempt these shows from the city of Hagerstown's noise ordinance under section one one, one five five dash five of the code of city of Hagerstown on those dates.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. So, the dates that are provided and the exemption from city code that's provided, does the exemption have a cutoff time? Now, if the game goes into, to so many innings, are we saying twelve, one, two?
Yeah, with the noise exemption. Yeah. But we, we've not done that. Usually though, if it's gonna be late, they had a couple of dates last year where it was gonna be like eleven o'clock and they didn't, so.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Appalachian Regional Commission, FY twenty six project funding requests.
Mr. Mayor, hereby. I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council authorize the submission of the following projects to the county commissioners for funding from the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty six Appalachian Regional Commission Art Grant. One, phase two of Hager's, Hager House Museum renovation of hundred fifty thousand dollars. Number two, update of the city's comprehensive plan, hundred thousand dollars.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of an extension of the Invest Hagerstown City Center redevelopment grant for twenty five through thirty one West Church Street Marketplace LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor, mayor and council to approve an extension of the Invest Hagerstown City Center redevelopment grant for the redevelopment project twenty five dash thirty one West Church Street to April first, twenty twenty six. The city's original approval was January thirty first, twenty twenty three, and this is the third and final extension to the date requested by the developer. If, if the April first, twenty twenty six deadline is not met, the grant shall be forfeited and staff shall send termination letter.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Award of contract to Submittable Holdings, Inc. for the establishment of a grants management portal for city, city incentive programs.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and city council to approve a contract with Submittable Holdings, Inc.'s for fifty four thousand nine hundred and forty seven dollars over a three-year period as outlined in the attached consent form.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of wastewater deduct meter at forty five West Oak Ridge Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Mr. Mayor, we move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached request form, request from New Cold located at forty five West Oak Ridge Drive, Hagerstown, Maryland for a sewer charge exemption consistent with city code two forty point six nine exemption of service charge, which states, whenever it may be established that the entire amount of water delivered to any property through a metered line from either a public or private water supply does not and cannot enter the WPC system, but illegally discharged or, but is legally discharged or consumed in such a manner as not to impose on the WPC system. but is legally discharged or consumed in such a manner as not to impose on the WPC system. An exemption of the sanitary sewer service charge may be made on application of the customer within the absolute discretion of the mayor and council as to such measurable water consumption which may be undelivered to the WPC system, provided that it shall first be determined by the approving authority that this is in fact existing. The wastewater deduct is further described in the attached staff memo dated March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of FY twenty-six through twenty-eight pavement preservation lists.
Mister Mayor I hereby move for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six pavement preservation list of streets to be repaved, the list of the streets for fiscal years twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Sorry for the hiccup or not.
It's all good, man.
Yeah. Okay, next up, we are in general citizens comments. Again, a reminder, limit to three minutes and purview to city business, please. First up, let's see. Sorry, I didn't have this ready. Uh, Stephanie Phillips.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your service to the community, Stephanie Phillips, city of Hagerstown. I still can't access city and county channels of your public meetings. Thank you for the increased security in the community and infrastructure improvements. If you're tapped into the water from the Smithburg Ridge Line and Plum all the way west, we can tap, if we can tap into electric from Frederick, we'll be better positioned to help mitigate Northern Dam risks. Brighton Dam in Montgomery County may lead the example of how this work is best handled. Recently I requested a file on parking meter theft case. In addition, I turned in two packets, one to city and one to county, of the incident of January tenth, twenty twenty-four. They have two completely different reports regarding that incident. One was corrected. The original one said that the vehicle is heading south on Potomac and made a right onto Antietam. The second one corrected said that they made a left onto Antietam. There are a few more corrections that need to be amended and then that will change the outcomes of this situation. This incident was phoned into the nine-one-one emergency communication. Traffic cameras could clearly show what happened. I would recommend, first of all, this whole thing could have been handled a lot better. I put it out a long time ago. It was an eighty-two-year-old woman driving and I don't think she got quite the care she deserved either or needed. But that having been said, so far what I have come up with as a suggested correction since you have a school on the block between the library and the main downtown square is to change so that you can allow the north-south traffic to go for a certain period of time, then have the east-west traffic go for a certain period of time, then halt all automobile traffic, make sure there's a time delay, and then give enough time for all pedestrians to cross two times. And that should prevent anything like this ever happening. Again, it was life-changing for me, I'm sure it's life-changing for her. Lastly, I just want to say, you know, if you're driving around Beltway Loop, there are many near misses, many collisions that get avoided every single day. You don't think about it very much until you feel like you're being run over by a car. I actually was in the same position as a driver about six months after the incident. Within twenty minutes, I started shaking, I felt nauseated, and luckily that situation was avoided. So please consider the suggestions and any other um information or discussions. If you could please talk to my family, I'm working on my recovery. And that's enough for me.
Thanks. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Kers Ray. You done? Okay. Uh, Karen Swafford.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Karen Dunn Swafford. I live at eighty-three twenty-eight Rycard Road, Fair Play, Maryland, two-one-seven-three-three. However, we just newly incorporated our Hub City chapter of the National Railway Historical Society here in Hagerstown, Maryland, off of South Cannon Avenue. Uh, wanted to just give you guys an update since we're still on the fence on what's going on with the locomotive two oh two. Uh, Save Locomotive two oh two, the organization and the Hub City chapter, we have to date raised donations of three thousand dollars and three thousand fifty dollars. Uh, we met with the Parks and Recreation Department today and are actually having a cleanup day on April the tenth, uh, for volunteers to come out. Actually, we're going the eighth, ninth, and tenth, but the tenth is open to volunteers in case anybody else wants to come out. Uh, we are going to be painting park benches, power washing the cabooses, uh, making sure that the inside of the museum is ready for the season to open. Uh, we will also be having our Easter Bunny event on the thirteenth of April. We're doing interpretation day, interpretate, interpretation days, the last Fridays of each month where we're actually gonna have somebody come on site uh, and pretend to be an engineer. Well, they actually are a retired engineer, but they're going to pretend to be an engineer and do educational things for the children. Um, we're also partnering with the Sailor House, which brings me to my ultimate point. The Sailor House has a memorandum of understanding with the city and that's what we are looking to uh ask the city for. So we would like to get back on the agenda at some point for a work session to provide you with that memorandum of understanding, to see if that's something that you would be um able to approve us specifically for restoration quotes um and contacting restoration companies. So thank you very much for your time tonight, that's all I have.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Next up, Stan Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, first of all, I want to make sure I'm on the right track. So I was watching TV last month and I thought I saw a video where the mayor, you guys annex a portion of the Colonel Henry Kidd Douglas Drive into the city limits. Did that happen or not?
That's correct.
Okay. So, uh, I've been here before asking that that road be renamed because it's named after Confederate soldier and the connotations that that has toward uh people of color and African-Americans. So, uh, and at one point two thousand twenty-two, I came before the previous mayor and council and asked for a letter of support to send to the county commissioners, uh, and I think they did. So I'm thinking now if you guys would consider, since the city has annexed that portion of the road into the city and you did a letter of support to change the name, if you consider changing the name now since it is within the city limits of Hagerstown. So, any questions? Thank you, that's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, next up, um, Full Moon.
Someone say Full Moon?
Can you stand, uh?
My God.
Name and address, please.
Full Moon, Hagerstown, Maryland. Currently, uh, on the bridge downtown. But, uh.
Yeah, it's done.
There we go.
Alrighty, so the reason why I'm speaking this evening is I found out disturbing news. Bowman was gonna donate land out near the airport to build a homeless shelter and a drug rehab. And the only thing that the county needed to do to facilitate this for the city of Hagerstown was a zoning change. The Washington County Commissioners, Randy Wagner, uh, Jeff Kidkiller Klein and Derek Har- Harvey decided that they were gonna vote against this. Only one Washington County Commissioner was in support of allowing this to happen. And I know a lot of people don't care about homeless people, they don't care about drug addicts. I get it. Uh, for those people, imagine going to shop somewhere downtown Hagerstown and not having to worry about being panhandled for bus money or, you know, whatever story they're gonna come up with so they can go buy crack or fentanyl pills or whatever they're doing. Uh, that sort of stuff would end and these people would be in a rehab homeless facility out near the airport where they can't walk to get drugs or alcohol. Uh, I think this benefits the community greatly and I don't understand why Derek Harvey, Kidkiller, Jeff Klein, and Randy Wagner decided that they were not gonna support this matter. The fact that only one Washington County Commissioner supported helping the homeless and helping eradicate the homelessness problem in downtown Hagerstown is, well, it's actually symptomatic of the way the Washington County Commissioners have acted towards the city of Hagerstown. Uh, this is the largest city in Washington County and they would not piss on you if you were on fire. So I'm just basically bringing attention to this fact and the fact that, uh, only one Washington County Commissioner decided that homeless people were worth even trying to uh to help and uh that rehab centers uh were not a priority of the county except for one Washington County Commissioner. I hate to say it, uh, it was actually Washington County Commissioner John Barr that was in support of this proposal. But the bottom line is, if you wanna try and fix Hagerstown, you've gotta fix the supporting county that Hagerstown is in, which is Washington County. It goes Republican every time. If you want different commissioners, they are elected at the primary. They're all Republican every time. If you want change, Democrats and independents need to register to vote as Republicans. Vote in the primary. We are calling this Operation Chaos. Derek Harvey won his seat by only twenty votes. That means if twenty-one people had switched from being a Democrat to a Republican just long enough to vote in the primary, they could have got that guy out of there. He wouldn't be a problem right now and he wouldn't be causing problems for Hagerstown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Michael Staub.
This is the second time I've had to follow him. More than education needs. And by the way, Scott granted me two extra minutes. Michael Staub, eighteen South Mulberry. I'm just here um to bring you back to reality. I've heard all this development. You are aware that our neighborhood has had the old hospital site bought. We're hearing all kind of things, so. The gentleman, um, council member, Altharder spoke tonight. I hope you're around when that project starts because we're gonna need your expertise. But what I want to bring you reality is, is our neighborhood is going into the spring and summer months and I've started picking up needles again, fifty-one in two and a half weeks. That's bad. The the police department cleaned up several alleys, but now we're being flooded with homeless. And I mean flooded. If any of you people take a trip down East Washington Street from South Mulberry to the former Sheets is up the top of the hill on East Washington on my side, on this, across from the bar, that whole block is empty. And most of it has had condemned signs on it. But I don't know if you are aware, but we've had homeless people setting fires in the neighborhood. Had that end building, the yellow building caught on fire, it would have burnt probably the whole block and the garage in the back. So this is what's going on over there. I'm out there amongst these people seeing what's going on. And I've left you all alone because I've been pestering Washington DC and Annapolis because what happens down there with that bunch is gonna affect you all, the county and the city. So I just want you to not forget about the east end. We are the east end, we are not south end, west end, north end. We are the east end. And let me tell you, we are very disappointed with what happened in that sheets up there. Go in there and take a look at the wall. We weren't expecting drug paraphernalia and everything else to be sold in there. The neighbors up there are hollering about them pressure washing the parking lot at midnight. That's another issue, but we are not gonna sit back and let that piece of property behind us. I know you all, it's private property, but we're gonna not not let rubber stamping take place this time. So please do not forget about our east end that we are seeing plenty of homeless. And if you go right up past the auto parts place, take a look where the billboards are and look in the area. They are living in tents in there, they've been there all winter in the cold. And I walked down in there and it is a shooting gallery. So please remember us, but thank you for your service. And I promise I won't be here to yell at you anymore. Scott's gonna give you.
You always make these promises.
Thank you, Mister Staub.
You never keep a promise.
Good night.
Okay, that's the last one. Is anybody else that, uh, wasn't signed up, wish to speak? Tim, you always have something to say, usually. No?
Okay.
All right, city administrator.
I have nothing to say, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Altharder.
I was told I'm not allowed to talk anymore tonight.
No.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Um, I have a few. I'm gonna try to keep it brief. Where are you? I just wanted to take a moment to um give a big thank you to uh, the, the, all the dedication and hard work over the past decades um from our former city, uh, what is she, planner, city planner? Is that right? Kathy? Yes, Kathy. Okay. Your passion and professional professionalism are truly inspiring. We are so grateful for all the contributions you've made throughout your career. You've been an invaluable asset to the department and your legacy will be felt uh for years to come. In honor of Women's History Month, uh, we se- we celebrate and recognize the incredible women who have shaped and held down our city departments with uh strength, dedication and leadership. Your work does not go unnoticed and we are proud to stand alongside you. So thank you to all of our uh Women's City employees. And then last but not least, thank you for everyone who came out and spoke. Um, we got to hear a little bit of both sides, whether it was from Fox and Associates or whether it's from the city's um residents, you know, being very vocal about your uh concerns, uh, project densities, uh, failure to have it complete in time. I believe everything was heard um today. And then last but not least, I wasn't gonna say something about this, but it's still weighing kind of in my heart, so I'm gonna kind of mention it briefly. I don't know where we quite stand as far as the police informing the ICE policy as far as Washington County as a whole. Um, myself being an immigrant, even though I'm currently uh naturalized, um, that hits kind of home to me because I do understand that there are some people who have been detained in the past um that are not actually criminals. They've just been detained based on someone reaching out saying, you know, expl- exploiting their status. So I just hope that we are very mindful of those individuals. And that's all that I have to say on that note.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Um, just one thing tonight. So um I just want to acknowledge the protests that um are being conducted throughout the city in response to what's happening or the decisions that's being made that's impacting um our nation. So I just want to thank everyone for exercising their rights in a peaceful manner. So that's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Bell.
I have nothing to say.
For me, uh, since January, the last three months, we have had a great showing of uh public showing up here and and with public comments. And I really want to thank the public right now for doing that. I really love to see a a full house here when we when we have public comments. Um, and that's it for me. Um, you gonna get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Any questions tonight on anything on the agenda?
No.
Okay, adjourn.